Oh, was the Columbia president will call this meeting in order. Turn it over to Dr. Spence here.
All right. Guys, you have a lot of paperwork and we're gonna work through some of that tonight. Don't let it become too overwhelming, but we'll start. Start with just some basics. With kind of what we're gonna be looking at tonight. So, we're gonna revisit the cash flow model just a little bit to show you a couple more things on that. So again, those are, those are big picture items like we talked about in our training session. You know, you want to keep that, that big overview. Well, the cash flow is a really good way to do that. And then we're gonna look at the FY twenty five budget with an idea of where we're going for FY twenty six. A lot of items in the school budget just roll over from year to year and kind of look at that cash flow too. But there have been some changes that we're gonna make for the FY twenty six budget. So, we'll look at some of that and then take some questions. Before we jump into that, policy DB in our conversations about board policies and all of those agenda items have policies on them this month. And I was kind of going through and reviewing some of those policies and kind of reminded myself of the annual budget requirements. And I thought you might like to see that as well. So as a board member, when you're approving the budget, these are the things that you're approving. Number one, you're approving the budget message. So I gave that to you in your handout that says budget message right on top of it. Did you, did somebody see yours?
No, I don't have.
This one's in our packet, corrects?
Correct, correct.
I don't have that thing.
You don't have this one?
Which you want.
But you may need this.
Let me, you got it?
You need this?
I do not, I have one, okay, yeah. So the budget message, and you can read through that on, on your own, but it just kind of goes through the, kind of the main points of next year's budget. So you'll see, you know, after that first kind of legalese of the first paragraph, your second paragraph, conservative estimates of the SAT, Prop C, classroom trust fund. SATs, we're working off that seventy one forty five estimate, and that's a three hundred and eighty five dollar increase per student. ADA decreased compared to previous years. And again, we're showing a gradual decrease in enrollment, forecasting still that slow continuous decrease in enrollment of two to four percent. I hope that doesn't continue and some of our early, like preschool kindergarten numbers look like they may be back, back up a little bit. So that's encouraging, but way too early to, to start thinking our enrollment's gonna, gonna bounce back the other direction. For the FY twenty six budget concerning salary increases, the base was not increased. Staff will be allowed movement on the schedule. We'll be participating in the baseline salary grant. Part of the Show Me Benefit Consortium kind of goes through the insurance numbers, the retirement contribution rates, and then the lease purchase obligations for the district. And then again, the final number there, the current unrestricted fund balance. I'm projecting it's gonna be seventeen percent and we'll kind of look through that at the, with the cash flow analysis here. And if that changes, then that will change. This is the first page of the budget book that you'll get. You remember this, this is good. And you'll get this in August or September when the fiscal year is complete and we have all the numbers with at least turned in to the auditor at that point. So, that's your budget message and that's, that's a, you know, as our, as our lady was describing that, that really high, this is like the really high view. Like, these are just the really big rocks of the budget. So, that's, that's thing number one. Estimated revenues and proposed expenditures, we're gonna talk about that kind of through this five o'clock hour. So we'll hit on both of those things. The report on district debt, we don't have a lot of debt thankfully, but that second page in this handout with the budget message, I showed you this last time, but that again is that HVAC loan. The amortization schedule and you can kind of see where we're at on that. That is our only debt that the school has right now. Of course, the, the roofing projects have been a big source of expenditures the last several years and we don't have any of that going into FY twenty six. Now for twenty five, we have the high school roof and we'll, when we look through this big ledger, you'll see that, but that's six hundred thousand dollars off the budget. So, those are big chunks that, that we will have moving forward. And then a general budget summary, and again, that's gonna be past meetings tonight. That's why we do these financial sessions, just so you can get that general, general summary of the budget. And it's such a big, massive piece of, of what we do, but sometimes it's hard to get the big rocks and get everything lined up. So, anyway, that's the requirements annually for your budget. Any thoughts or questions on any of that before I move on?
I, the state pays for the, the teacher grant, I didn't, they pay for that a hundred percent?
They do, yeah.
Right now.
Right now, yeah. Above what we're already, it's the, you know, so if somebody's making thirty eight thousand, the state's gonna kick in the two thousand to get them to, to get them to forty.
One other quick, that you mentioned, uh, maybe this has been mentioned by me, roofs?
Yeah.
Hail damage?
Yes, yes. We had a lot of hail damage and in a good way because it's gonna, we're gonna get an insurance claim off of that. We're working with our adjusters now to figure out kind of where that lands, but it looks like we're gonna get a lot of new roofing because of some claims there. And also some buses and some other, other things on campus.
So our new roofs are gonna be new roofs?
Yeah, 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 which pushes the, any kind of future roofing projects down the line, which is a good thing, for sure. Probably not from insurance adjusters, but.
Hard to edit.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions on that stuff?
Is, are we, are we gonna kind of see that broke down that way as you said, okay?
Yeah, we're, we're looking big and getting smaller as we go.
Okay.
So again, again, this is big stuff, uncertain economy, I talked about this last month, staffing cuts, conservative spending. This is just a reminder to everybody kind of where we're at. Twenty percent is our goal. Last year FY twenty four, we were at nineteen percent. We're gonna be around seventeen percent this year and then we'll be back up above twenty percent in FY twenty six. Largely due to salary attrition and avoiding voting large capital projects. So, just the six hundred thousand there and then you put six hundred thousand that we had this year in roofing that's not gonna be a factor. That's one point two million just in salaries and capital projects that we'll have to play with next year as opposed to FY twenty five.
I've gonna, are you, are, are we gonna continue looking at for twenty six, whenever you go into that as far as the staffing side of things? You're gonna go, you're gonna be looking at another, I wouldn't say another round, but it.
No.
Looking at if we're small enough.
Yeah.
At that point and if we need to.
The key word there is, is attrition and whenever somebody is gonna retire or whenever somebody moves out of the district, the administration's gonna look at that position and say, okay, is this necessary to keep this position?
We shouldn't expect that the contraction is over.
No.
We're still contracting.
Yeah.
I have a question about this as well.
Depending on the, the situation, right.
So I know with the new Fed director and stuff, we're hoping for more growth in the Fed department. Does that mean that we're gonna, I mean, cause the, the two that we have in classrooms, they're not gonna be able to handle if we haven't.
Oh yeah, Fed is one of those areas that the need will, will dictate the personnel, right. I mean, you know, if, if there are IEP calls for, you know, we have one on ones sometimes, paras are something that is always, those are always in flux. We're gonna have to get as many paras as we need and we really can't just sit back and say, well, we're only operating with five paras. Like that's just not, that's not sustainable. So, moving forward, yeah, Fed would be the department that.
That could change.
But again, still, I mean, it's still, the principle rings true that we're gonna look at the need and okay, do we need staffing here or not? Makes sense? Okay. All right, cash flow analysis, let me kind of bring that up and look at a couple things there. Just to kind of point out too, these models, they're all based on ASVRs. And if you'll remember, A- Annual Secretary of the Board Report is ASVR, one of your hundred acronyms that, that you'll learn. But the ASVR is what gets sent to the auditor, it's get, what gets into D E S I. Those are all official, official numbers. So when you're seeing things on these graphs, that's all historical data that D E S I has on file. The only thing that I'm forecasting is for the next year. So, when we're looking at this, there's no, there's no changing of these numbers. These numbers are, are what they are, so just kind of giving you that heads up. Let me pull this back and we'll look at a couple things. Okay, so first, let's look back at our unrestricted fund balance because I know we talk a lot about the unrestricted fund balance, but that is, that's the best way to really tell the health of the district. We have that red line that we want to stay above. That's financially, you know, in my opinion, that's the most important thing that we need to be able to do is stay above this red line. That's what the board has said is the line that we're comfortable operating. So you'll see, you know, this year, we're gonna come in, it's got us projected at seventeen point five percent. But the following year, we're up twenty one point, I can see the numbers better down here, that is super small. And if you like it in chart form, there's that, but then if you want just the raw numbers. You see seventeen point five and in FY twenty five, which is the year we're getting ready to close out, twenty one point nine, and then it rises accordingly. Now that's not all accurate, just like you can look at this and be like, wow, fifty percent. That's, that's not gonna happen because of all kinds of factors. But if everything remains static, that's, that's where we would end up eventually.
So, so obviously it gets harder for you or anything to predict the further we go out there. So that's seventeen and a half percent, how, how do you feel about that number? Are you pretty solid on that?
Yeah.
Pretty confident that's where we're gonna.
Yeah.
Stick it there on the twenty five audit?
Yeah, I am. So, a couple of other things to show you, these are, so these are more historical, guys. So this kind of gives you a, well, no, let me back up just a minute to what I wanted to, get on my cheat sheet to where I wanted to go. The revenue graph is good to look at. So this shows our revenue. And it shows kind of the projection of how it's gonna go over the next fifteen years. So, that's nice, okay, but it's, I think, a little more interesting to go down here and look at where that projection, actually the number comes from. So this shows, going back to twenty two, these are, this is how much revenue we, we brought in. So fourteen point eight, we dipped to fourteen, three fifty, and I'll show you kind of where that dip occurred and its name is ESER. Because you know ESER messed up all kinds of financial charts and graphs and everything else we looked at. Twenty four, we were back up to fifteen, twenty five, sixteen, and then it projects a seven percent increase. That's pretty large, so it backs off to four, four percent. So what, the reason I'm telling you all of this is to show you back when we looked at the cash flow graph. That is projected with a two percent increase, even though this would tell us that we could probably safely project it at four percent increase every year in revenue. I just projected two percent. So, that's why I'm comfortable with where we're headed because I'm projecting even lower than what the graph would, would tell me to project. So, just kind of wanted to, to make that point.
Staying very conservative.
Right, right, even more conservative than we, we probably have to be. Okay, so I know this is a lot to look at, let me just kind of show you a few more things here. So these are historical graphs. The first one I want to look at is the unrestricted revenue, which is this one here. Let me blow that up where you can see it. Okay. So, this goes back to twenty fifteen and it shows you where your revenue is coming from and kind of the trend of that revenue. So this is money in, this is total revenue up here and you'll see, you know, back in twenty fifteen, we were pulling in just under twelve billion and now we're up to sixteen. That's total revenue. The orange line is state revenue. The state's been a little weird, you noticed it dropped in twenty two, but then it's on the way back up. It dropped whenever this blue line went way up. What was the blue line? The feds, that was ESER. That's why that one year popped way up and then we, we got the influx and then we spent it and spent it down until we're now it's come back up just a little bit. But federal is always gonna be down here, state's always gonna be high above it. This is where we get the majority of our money.
So is the climb from twenty three to twenty four, that jump, I mean, it looks, almost a million dollars, I think, right there. Is that a reflection of ESER or what caused, because ESER was behind that, wasn't it, twenty, twenty two, twenty, twenty one?
Yeah, and it, you know, with ESER, it was a reimbursable thing too, so it depends on.
So you think we got that money?
Right, you didn't just get all of that at one time.
So we're not seeing a big revenue jump there, it was just a handout from the feds.
Exactly, yeah, that's not sustained. So I, when I'm forecasting, I can't look at that and say, well, you gotta take the outliers out.
So we're, it's showing just above fourteen in twenty three, twenty four, it's showing up at sixteen. So did, and we had sixteen in twenty four, so twenty five, what, what's the projection for twenty five?
For federal?
For, no, for total revenue.
For total revenue?
Yeah.
Go back to luck, two, sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen days, yeah. So my question is, is if we went from fifteen million, we got a big ESER bump that took us to sixteen million, how come we're then projecting sixteen million again?
Well.
Is that, is that.
Because other things are gonna come in and bump that up, like the state revenue is gonna continue to grow.
So all of the increases, the increase in, I don't think sales type of property title revenue there.
Right, right, that's gonna offset, yeah, yeah, that's all going up while the feds.
So we got jumped up to sixteen by the fed and then we think because of the, all the other money coming in in different areas or whatever, we're gonna be able to maintain that sixteen from that twenty four. Right, because we talked about. The state gives and get the balance in that.
That's probably, that's state local, I think.
Yeah.
The fed pretty much.
The fed is its own separate entity. And the state, we talked about the SAT going up almost four hundred dollars, like that's a big, that's a big deal.
So that's where.
And while I'm only forecasting two percent, that's gonna equal more than two percent.
Right.
Likely with our, with our state revenue.
So that, that push up there that the feds give us, we're maintaining that through the.
Through other revenues, correct, yeah. Okay, so a couple of other charts and then we'll dig into that, that big pack of paper you got. So these are unrestricted expenditures and I just want to point out a couple things here. So these are all the expenditures, you see the salaries. The, that's the green line, obviously that's the, the lion's share, ten million expenditures just in salaries. And over here, you get the actual breakdown of the, the growth and, and average. I can send these to you if you want to look at them at some point.
Does it give you the actual percentage, Marty?
Yeah. Well, these are growth percentages, it, this will give you a percentage of, yeah, I mean, you can kind of hold it over that and it should pop up with. That'll give you the actual number, but not necessarily the percentage. I've got some more that'll show you a percentage.
But and is that just salaries, that salary and benefits?
These are just salaries and the purple line down here is benefits.
Okay.
So you combine that together and those are the two highest pieces of expenditures. The orange line will be supplies, which is going up slightly since twenty twenty, which you would expect to see. Purchase services has pretty much been the same for the last ten years and the green line, transfers to operating capital. So that's when we need to pull in money from other funds and those kind of ebb and flow depending on the needs of the district.
So that's basically showing salary and benefits, like twelve of the sixteen million, is that around twelve?
Yeah.
I think it's about twelve and a half.
Yeah, it's gonna be about eighty percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, couple more. I've got more, but I'm not gonna go through all of them with you tonight. I'll save some for future financial meetings. That's just revenue expenditure, kind of how those play together, but I wanted to show you, let's see, this one's, this is your unrestricted fund balance. So this is kind of interesting. So that's, you've got the actual number, the ending balance, and then the fund percentage. So, you'll see kind of how we've, we hit a high watermark on our, you know, twenty, what was that? Twenty eight percent in twenty two. And then again, with ESER, that inflated that a lot and then we've been going down since. And twenty five will be about there and then we'll start going back.
What were we in twenty before?
In twenty, we were at, right at twenty percent.
In nineteen?
Nineteen, we were at twenty three percent.
Okay.
And back at twenty fifteen, we were at nineteen percent. So we've been, I mean, pretty consistent right about that twenty mark for a long time. And it's a, you know, it's a good goal for the district to have, but that, that's just kind of an outlier that, and now we need to kind of get back to the, the median there. And then one more I'll show you, this is salary and benefits. And this kind of shows it a little differently. So you've got, this is your percentage, Coach, this is the one I was looking for. So, your total salary and benefits, and you'll see it was above eighty percent. We're now actually just a little bit below eighty percent. And that's, those are both salaries and benefits.
Good.
Good.
What's the green line there?
Green line is just salary.
Okay.
And then this is just benefits and these are both combined.
So twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, we're about the same?
Yeah, yeah, pretty static.
Actually twenty one through twenty four.
Yeah, not a ton of change there.
We're actually lower staff now than we have been since fifteen?
Right, not just necessarily, and that's not necessarily numbers of staff, that's just the number, that, this is just the percentage of the budget that we're paying.
Percentage, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
So this does not reflect our.
No, 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 it does not, nor does it really reflect the number of staff we have, this is just.
We get a fewer staff.
This is just the percentage of the budget that we're spending on staff. Okay. All right, questions about any of that? And again, these numbers are not put in here just arbitrary, they're all ASVR numbers from our previous audits. So this is, this tool is not just, well, you know, Dr. Spence is throwing out some numbers up there and, and hoping, hoping for the best. They're actually numbers that we have with D E S I and.
But any projections past this next year, we can't give them a whole lot of credence to.
No, no, I mean, this looks tremendous, but that's not.
Well, besides that, I mean, we, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Sure, yeah. So. That's why we do this stuff all the time and, you know, always trying to update you on what's going on because it's fluid. It's a very fluid budget. You know, we're, the things we know are this unrestricted fund balance is gonna be around seventeen percent. Next year should be back around twenty percent and then we hope to continue to grow it past that. But that's kind of where we, where we wanna stop as far as getting too far into the forecasting mode.
Well, I think that's maybe a discussion that the board, you need to have further down the road, you know, once you do hit that twenty percent mark is, do we need to set another benchmark?
Yeah.
Or, you know, do you, do you then look at your projects and what you need to do then? I mean, I think that's another question once you get back to where you want to be.
Yeah, I think that's a, hopefully we can have that. hopefully we can have that discussion. All right. Any other thoughts, questions on any of that? Okay, we're gonna move to that big packet of paper that you have paper clipped there. For those of you that have been with us when the auditor comes, this is kinda my presentation note. When the auditor comes, he gives you the audit book and says, all right, page three, look at this. Page six, look at this. And it's, I don't know, it's not the most engaging way to present, but it's, I think it'll be the best for this data that we need to look at tonight. So this is your current general ledger for FY twenty-five. So this is the current year we're in. So we're, this was taken on June sixth, so Friday of last week. So we still have three weeks left in the fiscal year. So some of this will still change before it's all said and done. Money's will need to be moved into different accounts. We'll need to, you know, we'll still have bills that come in. Um, we'll still have some revenue that comes in. So we're gonna look at it knowing that there will be some, some minor changes before the end of the fiscal year. So, um, the board meeting, the next board meeting will be on July one. That's obviously the first day of the fiscal year, so we will not have all of the final data for you on July one. So likely we will have to wait till August for that final, that, that final fiscal data to show you. Um, so this is an over, this is an overview. A lot more variables and details that I and our staff will need to, to consider. So first, I want you to look at page ten. So the first ten pages, actually go to page eleven. But the first ten pages, that's all revenue. And you can look at that at some point, but, um, you know, a lot of the revenue is what it is and there's not a lot that we need to point out.
You said page eleven, you mean count eleven pages or it says page?
It says page eleven, top right, top right corner.
Mine says page thirty-nine.
Uh-oh. Is yours out of black?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Wanna make sure Coach has his.
Page eleven, all right, gotcha.
Page eleven. So, page eleven, about halfway down, you'll see kinda the break there and I think I've got it highlighted for you with your copies. So revenue, all those pages that you kinda pushed to the side, there's the total revenue. So you'll see our total revenue, fourteen point four million is what we budgeted. That's what we thought we were gonna get this year. To date, we have fourteen point six seventy-seven. So we are up two hundred and forty-one thousand on the budget from where we thought we would be when we budgeted this a year ago. So that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Is that mainly through like grants and things like that?
And just getting more from this, you know, it all depends on ADA and, and everything else. So, um, we were conservative with the estimate and, and it turned out to be a little over.
Does that include the CDU money?
Yes, and that's another reason it's, it's over. Okay, so then, after that green highlight there, then we get the rest of this document is expenditures, okay? So where I have, uh, my little pin marks, that's where we, we're changing things for next year. Some of those accounts we've kept, um, we've kept budgeting money in and we've never used those accounts. So we, we've taken that out on the budget. So you just see a cross, something's been crossed through and a zero there. That means we're not gonna budget anything for next year for that. So for instance, um, Andrew's behind me, but elementary tech services, we have never touched that account. We paid plenty on tech services in the elementary and everywhere else, but that's not an account we've ever really used. So we zeroed that out. Elementary general supplies, um, that you'll notice is taken from forty thousand to thirty-five thousand. So each building, there's a five thousand dollar drop next year from where they were at this year. And that's just tightening the belt and being more conservative. Um, you'll see the elementary was right under budget on that line at thirty-nine, nine, four, nine. So they, you know, Mr. Rogers included and I stopped staying under budget, but we're gonna drop that just a little bit for next year. All right, page twelve. So when you see that line in the middle of the page, that's the end of elementary's building budget. So ES or EL is, is elementary. I always put it ES for whatever reason. So the whole building, we had budgeted one point nine six six. We've spent to date one point nine two. So we're in the good thirty-seven thousand for elementary. So we should be, we should be good in the next three weeks. I don't see the elementary spending that much money. Um, below that, again, you'll see some lines that we've zeroed out. Their general supply budget, um, has been dropped, uh, okay, sorry. We've switched to middle school. So after that line, now the MS is in front of those codes and that's middle school. So same thing we're doing with middle school general supplies that we did with elementary. Um, middle school spent way under and I think one of, uh, Coach's, uh, you had caught that the, the climate and culture of middle school had about fifteen thousand. So that's, they were pulling from that instead of their general supply budget. So you'll kinda, you can add those both and see that they were still under budget, but they were going at a different, you know, just using a different, uh, different account. Um, and then MS vocal, we dropped that a little bit for next year. All right, um, page thirteen. Um, you'll notice the sub salaries and that's, man, that's, that's hard to predict each year, how much you're gonna have to spend on subs. Um, but I increased that just a little bit for, for middle school, put them up to forty thousand, um, which is what they spent this year.
How did that compare to the other ones? Or is there just so much difference to any of the buildings? They don't compare or?
It, I mean, you can compare them, but it's, it's, it's gonna be different, yeah, yeah. And we'll get to the other ones, um, as we go. In fact, I think you can probably look back on elementary to see where that was. That should be on page eleven.
It was forty thousand on that elementary.
There it is, yeah, and they went.
On the page eleven or page twelve?
It's on page twelve. So forty thousand, they, that was the budgeted amount and they went over sixty-two thousand was their, was what they spent.
So what's your plan?
Well, elementary's had a lot of data days where they get a lot of subs. We're gonna look at cutting back on those and doing some things. And obviously, we've, we've cut some staff there, so we will just, by attrition, we'll have that a little lower just because we don't have as many staff. So middle school totals, um, back on page thirteen, we budgeted one point eight. They spent one point four. So we're in the good four hundred and fifty-five on middle school.
Where were their, where was all their savings? Or did they just get more revenue?
Um,
And how did, how did they kinda?
They just didn't spend as much as.
Across the board?
Well, you can look at certified salary is almost, yeah.
Forty-five thousand.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Plus, yeah.
Or six thousand, you know.
So that's a lot, right there, yeah.
So they're gonna have less staff, basically?
Yeah.
Insurance is.
Insurance is a big part of that.
Yeah.
So below middle school, below the green highlighted area there, um, we've zeroed a couple spots out there that we just don't use. Um, this is high school now. High school travel. Um, we dropped that from fifteen hundred to five hundred. Their general supplies, um, bumped down to forty-five thousand. Page fourteen.
This is high school here?
This is high school, yeah, this, yeah. So page fourteen wraps up high school at the bottom there. Um, you'll see their subs. They were, they went over as well at sixty-four thousand. But we're gonna try to do a better job of getting everybody to that forty thousand mark, but subs are kind of a constant struggle. High school finished, um, budgeted one point six. They spent one point five five. They're in the good one hundred and thirty-nine. Page fifteen. Page fifteen SS is summer school and this is one, I'm gonna dig in a little bit more on summer school. Um, I believe it, so remember, this is not the current summer school. This would've been summer school of, of twenty-four. So we budgeted one hundred and sixty-five thousand. We spent a hundred and ninety thousand, so we were over twenty-five thousand. Um, I think that's probably over staffing. We expected more kids than we got. Um, and I know this year we've already done a better job of staffing for the amount of students we've had.
Okay, thirty-two thousand over?
Yeah.
In staffing?
Mm-hmm. So that's something we've, we've addressed for this year. Okay, page nineteen, we're gonna flip you over. A lot of these in between are things that we just don't use a lot of.
What page is this?
Nineteen. So nineteen is the end of the sped budget. So their sub salaries for sped, that's another thing that.
SE is sped?
SE is sped.
Okay.
So coding comes into play here. So we've talked about like all of these buildings that went over on their subs. Well, do you code a special education teacher in high school? Are you coding them as, they need a high school sub? Or they need a special education sub? A lot of times, they're gonna get coded as the building sub and not the special education department because that's just what, they consider themselves a high school teacher or an elementary teacher. So that way, um, yeah, it's just easier on our, on our secretaries and our, our bookkeeper. But twenty thousand is what, uh, we're gonna budget for next year. I am not sure why it was at sixty-two, but, um, fourteen, three fifty is what we spent on subs for sped teachers last year.
So that's, so if you had sixty-two thousand budgeted and you did fourteen, what's that, is that forty?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Yeah.
Forty-seven thousand?
It's over here.
Oh.
I found it.
That's a little further over.
I like it.
I'll try and make it look less.
Okay, so, um, if you take that and put it back towards those buildings.
Yeah, we can offset that, right. And that's what a lot of us will do and when we get to the, that's why, you know, this is good, but you also wanna look mainly at the big, the big categories at the end, yeah. So the sped totals, um, budgeted one point three, spent one point one-six-two. In the good, one eighty-four. Next, we're gonna flip over to page twenty-six. Welcome to keep this document and hit me with questions on those other pages too. Just in the interest of time, I'm trying to just kinda hit the highlights. This is one that came up, um,
What's the last month?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
About paying tuition to other schools. Um, so I thought it'd be kinda interesting to look at the year-to-date total on those. Um, so you'll see that tuition, say, these are, these are expenditures. So we paid, um, ninety-five thousand total in, um, tuition expenses for students in other districts this year. Those are because of special education needs, um, foster situations where they're a resident of our district, but for whatever reason, they're attending school at a different, um, in a different building. The good thing about, the only good thing about that is that we get a lot of revenue from districts. Our revenue equaled two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So
Where is that at?
It's not in there. It's back in the, the revenue section, but I just wanted to pull that out because, um, I thought that might be a, a question you would have that, you know, here's, here's all this expense, but where is the money in? Um, but we do, we get over two hundred thousand dollars in tuition. Of course, a lot of our tuition is at the high school level from the rural schools, uh, but we also fall into that category where we have to bill other districts too because kids are placed in our district, but they're not residents of our district. And if that's the case, we'll bill the, uh, the home district for their tuition. And our tuition, if you remember, you voted to raise that for next year. So that number will be going up that, uh, we received from other districts.
So Marty?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed something here. So were we've changed this, these three categories to fifteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Would we spend ninety-five thousand in those three categories? Is that right?
Correct.
Then why aren't we increasing that more?
Great question, Coach. Here's my answer. We are changing the way we do some things in special education that would give me hope that those numbers would come down as far as, um, placement of students and, and working with those families for their IP's and things like that. So we wouldn't necessarily have to spend, um, money for tuition.
But that's.
But that still could be the case, but it's gonna be offset by the revenue anyway, but my hope is that we can get that down to a more manageable number. Do you have something else?
No, I mean, it's took to be fifty thousand dollar variable.
Sure, and, you know, all of this stuff, and that's what makes, you know, that's what makes school finance so tough because we could have a kid move in to the district in the middle of September and if they're high needs and we have to hire a pair for them, or we have to send them somewhere else for half the day to get services. Those things become expensive very quickly and we have no way of predicting what our population is gonna be.
That would, uh, include those students that we send to Rawl?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I, that's probably one of our bigger.
That's a bigger, yeah, that's a bigger price. Like, you're, you know, your district's with like a foster care situation and it's gonna be something like we would, like, you know, seven grand or something like that, so. All right, page thirty-seven. And again, there's some others in between if you wanna look through those and let me know your questions that you have. I'm happy to answer anything you've got. On thirty-seven, um, I just circled that big hundred and eighty thousand because if you're like, why is that in the budget? Because we haven't spent any of it. Um, that is a savings account for our tech department so that when those Chromebooks that we bought with us for money go end of life, we have some money stashed away that we can use.
Remember you talking about that?
Right, so that's why that hundred and eighty thousand is budgeted. We roll that over every year to stockpile that. So when that big bill comes due, it's not a huge drain on the.
We were gonna do that, we do fifteen or twenty thousand a year or something like that. We're gonna plan to get that kinda staged out to where once we take the big hit, we can kinda do that in steps?
Yeah.
Did we have that planned?
We did, yeah. Um, let's see. Page thirty-nine, what page is that?
I've got thirty-eight, I quit.
Oh, no.
So you, you don't do thirty-nine?
I've got somebody's forty-four.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Go fresh, right.
Was it thirty-nine?
Forty-nine, yeah.
Thirty, forty-four.
There it is, buddy.
Okay, everybody got thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. On page thirty-nine, um, several adjustments there and these are adjustments that they just haven't been made for a few years and they, they needed to be. So I've gone through and kinda tried to make some adjustments there where we need to. We were way over on custodial supplies this year and I'm still working to find out why that number was so high. Um, we spent a hundred and sixty-one thousand on custodial supplies. Um, and we do have a lot of custodial supplies. So I think we're, uh, we're in good shape for, for quite a while. But we're dropping that down to eighty thousand, which is a slight increase over what it was because all of that stuff has gone up. Um, but not to that level. Um, maintenance supplies, um, we were a little over on maintenance, but I'd like to keep them around thirty thousand. Um, electricity and gas, um, electric, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five, we spent a hundred and eighty-six. I'm gonna move that up to two hundred, but I'm gonna move natural gas down to one hundred because it was only at seventy-four thousand. So, um, you know, the rising pro, price of doing business and a lot of these numbers really hadn't been, um, touched for a couple of years. They've just been rolled over from one year to the next. And then fuel down there, same way, we budgeted five thousand, we spent nine thousand. Um, so ten thousand, I feel like is a, is a good spot.
Now, that's fuel for what?
That's fuel for our on-campus activities and that's not buses, correct.
Marty?
Yes.
Back on your custodial.
Yes.
Okay, two questions. Number one, uh, building upkeep? Okay, that was.
Where's that? Where's that at?
Probably below.
Supplies?
Yeah.
That went from, that's fifty-three thousand over one, you know what that is? Or what building up, what that means?
You know, that, so I know like the fridge or the freezer that we bought for the elementary, that was in there. I'd have to go back and look at the exact-
Wasn't that on Grandville?
No. No, that was straight out of the budget.
That might be that.
Yeah, that's going to be at least part of that, yeah. And I go back and look at the rest.
So custodial supplies, back to that again. Are you sure you're budgeting enough that we spent a hundred and sixty-one thousand? You're saying we're gonna spend half of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Made some adjustments there, but- And let's see, finally, we'll look at page forty-four. That magical page that some of you don't have. Everybody got forty-four? If you find your-
I've got an extra, we're gonna have one for somebody.
Okay, so forty-four, we have the final expenditures. I didn't highlight that for you, but that's at the very bottom of the page. So we budgeted fifteen-five-eighty. We spent fifteen-nine-nine-seven, so we were over four hundred and seventeen. So we were, we had a little more revenue, we had more expenditures. So that's gonna, it still leaves about a loss of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars there, um, or-
And this is what, what's gonna cause us to see the seventeen percent?
Yes.
This is what we're looking at?
Yeah.
So when we audit next year and we see this and we see-
Yeah, you shouldn't be surprised.
It'll be the four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right. Four hundred thousand lost in the expenditure column. We had two hundred more in the revenue, so it's gonna be about a two hundred thousand loss.
Which each percent is roughly one-fifteen.
Yeah. So loss of seven hundred thousand dollars in salary for FY twenty-six. We've got no major capital projects, so again, moving forward, we've got a lot of reason to be optimistic and a lot of reason to, to think that that, to know really that that line is going to move forward. But for this FY twenty-five fiscal year, we should come in right on seventeen. Take that with you'd like, and, um, you can enjoy some late night reading. Yeah, sure.
Okay, other last page there, it says budgeted, and so this is, this is what we budgeted that we were going to spend, right?
Correct.
And that's what we spent.
Correct.
Okay, do we have something that shows exactly what our revenue was?
The revenue?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, back on page-
What's?
Eleven.
Fourteen-four, what is it?
Yeah, back on eleven, we were positive two hundred and forty-one thousand in revenue.
The total was-
Just from our budget?
Yeah, from what we budgeted, yes, correct.
Okay, well, I'm still-
And we're going to make that, because by law, we have to have a balanced budget, so we're gonna make that balanced. But that's like Matt said, that's where you're, we're gonna drop a little bit in our unrestricted fund, because we've gotta sell that money to somewhere to balance that out, and it's gonna come from the unrestricted fund.
Okay, something still not computer.
Got it.
If this is revenue, we got fourteen-six-seventy-seven?
Yes.
Oh, is it right there?
Yep.
Okay, but we spent fifteen-nine-nine-seven. But that-
Yeah.
Am I figuring that right?
Yeah.
So we're actually, we overspent one point whatever?
Well, part of that, so like, you know, your, your roof is gonna come into play, like, there's some things that are gonna, that will be different funds, and it's not all quite that cut and dry.
Well, but, yeah, Brent, I mean, I see what you're saying there, and that, that's, that's exactly right, and that's what it says. And a lot of that re- reduction in, in revenue is due to reduction in enrollment, uh, and other things that bring in-
Sure.
Our revenue. Uh, and that, you know, the, the fifteen million are expenses, you know, we, that reflects us having more staff than we had.
Right, correct, yeah.
But I mean, I, I feel like this number's more in line with the, I mean, it's close to in line with the audit, what we showed, where we were one point two.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what, essentially what that's telling us, one point three.
Well, even, okay, but we budgeted too much.
Our salary.
We spent too much, we budgeted too much, right?
Right.
Which that's why this-
We've made corrections for next year and-
And that's why the spreadsheets you're using now helps us.
Now I can see that, correct.
Okay, gotcha. Good.
So, I'm just trying to think, it's here, on revenue. We budgeted fourteen point four-three-six.
Yes.
But we got five hundred thousand dollars from the government. If we hadn't got that, we'd have been at fourteen-one. If you take out one set, if you take out all the grand changes there, well, I'm just thinking about that, with that one-
Sure, but we also wouldn't have, we wouldn't have done that work without that grant.
Right, yeah, we would have.
Right, the expenditures wouldn't have been there without the revenue.
Right. But what I'm asking though is, would we have, would we have hit our budgeted revenue without that?
It's hard to say, because we knew we were gonna get it when we made the, like, we'd already-
Oh, you knew, so we budgeted it in there, yeah.
Yeah, so we knew we would have that. Yeah.
The butt lovers were trying to-
Yeah. To see the, uh, dusty grant.
Good question.
Yes.
You know, we talked about the school Rawl that we send the kids to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know we've reduced that budget, well, I mean, we've increased it, but from what we've paid this year.
Sure.
Is that the one that we paid already? Is that yearly or is that monthly?
It's a monthly tuition, yeah.
So that twenty-one thousand that we-
I'd have to go back and look, like, I mean, they have a monthly tuition. I'm not sure what our pay schedule is for that, um, whether that's the monthly tuition or if that's more than one. I have to look back.
Is tuition on any, on the sped?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's just tuition in general.
So, well, it was in years.
Okay.
To the dispense.
Yeah.
That was in the monthly.
Okay.
You want me to?
Not the, this is-
Right, that's what I was wondering, it's twenty-one thousand, but we're only twenty-one half a month, but we're only about eighty-four-five thousand a, a year or is it a month? And how?
Did we not know that we were gonna be sending those?
No, not when we made this budget, yeah, I mean, that was, that was a IEP decision in, in the year, so.
And was that one of those numbers that was probably just rolled over from last year and?
Yeah.
Without?
Yeah, we assumed, you know, unless there's something we know is gonna happen, we're gonna take the number from last year and push it over to the next year, as far as budgeting goes.
So the twenty-one thousand a month that we're sending to them, but this doesn't cover it, that's what I'm confused.
Okay. I don't know if it's twenty-one thousand a month. I'll have to go back and look at the monthly ledger for that, and I'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
But yeah, that's a individual case, so I'll have to go back and look eventually for that.
Yeah, that would be good to know.
Yep. Anything else? That's all I got.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
See if I got all my pages together here.
Killed a lot of trees.
Is, uh-
So, you can take right till a minute.
Yeah, Matt, did you have another question?
No, I think I've found this over here. So, Athletic Director James here. So is this, this seventy thousand, is that the high school athletic budget there?
That was this year's high school athletic.
That was this year's, yeah. And so we moved that all out of the student?
It's all there.
And actually, Robert's gonna, he's gonna, he's, don't steal his thunder, because he's, he's got a folder prepared.
Oh, yeah.
He's ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll move it on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Yeah, five minutes.
We'll take it, sorry.
We'll take it, sorry.
Time to get started on the rest of our agenda here. You have a consent agenda in front of you? Are there any changes to that?
Added an item for action if the board so chooses. I'm gonna explain in my admin report about the, I've sent an email just on the thought of putting our two trailers out for bid that sit between the upper and lower elementary. I'll explain that in the, in the report, but I, it is an item for action if the board chooses to take it. And you're gonna be, hang on, yeah.
Any other questions there? Then I would receive a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? All right then. Move on to your report.
Okay, yeah, summertime. Let the principals not come to the June, July meetings. We do have some administrators here tonight, we appreciate that, but no reports from, from admin during the summer. Summer school is going really well. The, the pool is being used after our rainy days. We finally got some nice sunny warm days for our kids. Even when it was raining and sixty degrees, we're jumping to the pool, so. Summer school's been good. The modular classroom situation with our reduced staff, reduced classroom space in the elementary. Talking with Mr. Rogers, he still has an additional couple of open spaces in the main building of the elementary, so those modular trailers that sit between the upper and lower hall are empty. Initially, wasn't really sure if we wanted to, to put those out for bid just on the case that we might need those, and that is still a valid concern. But I don't think with our enrollment the way it is, I'm not sure that we're gonna need those trailers for the foreseeable future. In the next, you know, three to five years, I don't think we'll be needing those trailers, and in the meantime, they're gonna sit there and without, without use. So I would like to recommend to the board to, to put those out for bid. I know I've had at least one interested party already. So the potential to get rid of those trailers without spending school resources to do it is appealing. If you remember last year, we had the two up by the Hicks house. One we were able to successfully sell, the other had to be demoed. And I think the, the demo price for that was between six and seven thousand dollars. So obviously, that's not really a expense we would like to, to have if we can get rid of those without any cost to the district. I think that would be a smart thing for the district to do. So that would be my recommendation.
If we got rid of those, is the only trailer left in bids?
A cat trailer.
What's the, do we have?
Yeah, I'm talking.
Maybe to get rid of that?
That would be, yes, at some point. We're still trying to find the right space for them because it's not just elementary, it's middle school as well. So a place that, that, that we can bring both kids without disrupting the other buildings. But we're, we're looking at options for that. But yeah, that would be our last trailer that we have, yeah.
Are they all the same, I mean, are those the same years the other ones are in the same realm?
They're in the same realm. They're, so they're nicer as far as just wear and tear because they've been kind of insulated between those two buildings. They don't have water or sewer hookups like the ones on the corner did, but they're, they're still pretty solid and decent shape.
And just because we put them out for bid doesn't mean we.
Exactly, no. And I would come back after the bids and give you my recommendation on if we accept or.
Is there any option to use them to storage?
Sure.
I mean, they're buildings that are already paid for. I don't know what the upkeep is.
Yeah, we could use them for storage. I don't know that we really need that right now, but it would be a, I mean, they're, they're decent buildings.
Yeah.
So I was, you know, it's not a.
You had to get look something.
Exactly, exactly. So there's, there's definitely two sides to the argument, but I, I would probably lean towards putting it out for bid, and if we have somebody that's willing to, because we did have that situation last year where we ended up having to pay money to get them, to get them gone. So if we have an opportunity to have somebody come in and, and make a few bucks off of them, I think that would be a.
And there's no time constraint on these like there was the other ones, so.
No, correct, yeah. We, we wanted markings, we wanted them off of, I don't think people saw when they drove on campus. Now there's, there's not the time element here.
Well, I think the year's been kind of a hope.
Yeah.
That we could at some point get rid of trailers.
The modular trailer, yeah, yeah.
There's that too, hopefully.
Sure.
But I, I agree, but there again, if you, you don't have to take the bids or.
Right, and in the meantime, you could also check with administrators and staff.
Sure.
See what ideas people might have as far as needs that, that could fill, like Roger said.
Yeah.
But if, if they're just gonna sit there, buildings that are not being used tend to deteriorate.
Right. What's the mobile home?
And how long, so, and Mr. Rogers, that was my first discussion with, with Mr. Rogers. Like, what's the plan for these buildings? And we, we just don't have anybody that needs that space.
Right.
For the.
And that's been for two years?
No, they were used last year, but because of our reduction in staff, we just don't have any for them.
And that's kind of been our, one of our goals, like Brent was saying, in all the movement that we've made with the FODA buildings or those buildings and, and moving spend.
We've got some nice space, we really do.
So if we're looking at a, what would you say, two to four percent is what the projection is on eighty-eight decrease?
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we're not getting bigger.
No.
We're getting smaller.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you did say we had a couple of rooms that weren't being used.
We do, yeah. Mr. Rogers said he had a couple of other spots that he could put people if, if he could, so.
Okay.
Okay. That's that. We can go back to problems for action if you'd like. And then I've got your board report from MSBA.
Welcome to the June edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues once again dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. MSBA's Director of Outreach Caitlin Whaley says that while the legislature's FY twenty-six budget has some good news, there's also reason for caution.
The legislature passed their FY twenty-six budget this year, which included some funding highlights including fully funding the foundation formula, baseline teacher salary grant, and school transportation. While it's exciting that we have a fully funded foundation formula, we do want to encourage you to budget cautiously as the governor does have the power to withhold funding anytime he predicts revenues might not meet projected expenditures. So just work closely with your superintendents and for any questions, you can reach out to our very own Linda Quinley.
Caitlin says that the passage of Senate Bill sixty-eight provided some positive fixes for public education after last year's passage of seven twenty-seven.
Some of the legislation passed this year was Senate Bill sixty-eight, which included a lot of provisions related to K- twelve education. Some of them were really positive fixes that were necessary after last year's passage of seven twenty-seven, such as fixing the hundred and sixty-nine day school year calendar, allowing for exceptions due to inclement weather. And included in other legislation was also a cellphone ban. We know that you all are very curious about how this will impact you, and our policy department has been working hard to make sure that you have the latest and most up-to-date policy. I do want to note that cellphone policy was already included for those of, those of you who use MSBA's policy services, but they are working to put out a standalone policy just to make sure that everyone is in compliance with this if you use our policy services.
Missouri parents may soon have a better understanding of whether their child is performing at or above grade level on the state's standardized test under a sweeping education bill.
Another exciting change is the inclusion of a new category in the MAP test ratings. So now there will be five categories with one of those being grade level. There was confusion previously as the actual grade level laid somewhere in the basic, and this led to people misrepresenting performance of our students. We want to make sure that we are accurately representing how well our students are doing in school, and we're hopeful that the inclusion of this new level of grade level will bring clarity for not only administrators and parents, but also you as school board members as you're assessing how your students are doing.
And although the session is over, Caitlin says it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with their legislators.
Now that the legislature is out for regular session, we encourage you to reach out to your local legislators and invite them to tour your schools. Back-to-school events are great times to get them inside your schools and see the wonderful work that you're doing.
MSBA's legislative positions on state and federal education issues are determined at the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your school board has a position statement on an issue that you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's position on issues. Make your plans now to attend the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, to be held October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in Kansas City. The event will once again feature outstanding general session speakers along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. And past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2025 Paul Morris Community Service Award. The award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through June twenty-seventh, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. And finally, if you've been following MSBA's social media pages, you've seen many of the regional winners of MSBA's Future Builders Student Scholarships. Congratulations to all of the regional winners and to Aiden Cox of Sykeson Senior High School, who is also the statewide winner. All of these students' essays are on the MSBA website. These outstanding students truly exemplify the amazing teaching and learning happening in every corner of the state. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report. Welcome to.
So a couple of notes from that. The cellphone ban, we were well ahead of the curve on that, but that will be a statewide policy, not this coming year, but the year following. They'll give districts a year to get things in place, but obviously, we already have that in place. And then they talked about representatives. Roger and I were both at the Chamber Luncheon with, with Lisa Dernell the other day. Mr. Wagner and then Mr. Schmidt came with me as well to kind of hear her report from Jeff City. That's all I got.
Were you gonna talk about summer school, or did you?
I did. I did not give the, I put the numbers in your fair report, but.
Okay.
Elementary is one ninety-seven, middle school one forty-four, and high school, including weight training, that's seventy-five students. Average attendance seventy-four percent, so attendance not superb in summer school, but that's to be expected.
So, summer school, do we get paid extra per student compared to the regular year?
Yes.
Like we used to, I think?
Yeah, summer school is, we want as big of an enrollment as we can, as we can get. And unfortunately, you know, starting it a little earlier, the pool was closed, and I think that, that hurt some of our elementary members.
Yeah, I wondered.
And the rainy days, I mean, just to be real honest.
Yeah.
The pool is a big factor in, in elementary.
Someone like the athlete skill lift weights, does that count?
Yeah, and Mr. Wagner, you probably can tell better like how much that, it's not.
Yeah, it, it has to, yes, it, it can. We can count it as a PE class in the high school. It, we have to tie a very minute credit to it, like a quarter of a credit to it, but.
So it's not like that student's there all day?
No, no, no.
So. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So is there any thought on not starting so early?
Yeah, it's something we'll have to talk about.
Because it seemed like it.
We were hopeful that maybe the city could open up a little bit earlier, but that didn't materialize, so. Yeah, we'll need to look at if that, if that needs to be pushed back.
But perhaps if students are out of school for another week or so, they might be more encouraged.
More motivated to come back.
They're very excited.
Exactly, exactly.
Give it a look.
And that's something.
Too much to come, and so, yeah, I'm just saying that increasing summer school enrollment would be a good thing.
Yes, for sure.
And I would hope that we would work toward that.
Yep, definitely. That's something we'll be talking about.
And then I know that the majority of it comes from elementary and, and some of it in middle school, so. And kids that go to summer school gain a lot. They, they benefit from summer school, it's not just going swimming.
No, and yeah, I've kind of oversold that probably, but there is a lot of educational value to what we do during summer school as well.
May I interject on one other thing that's something those enrollment numbers? The, our SAE class is not in there in the numbers as well because we don't know going into the summer who is going to actually receive SAE credit through our supervisor.
Describe what, yeah.
Yeah, supervised agricultural, agricultural experience. And usually, usually that's, we know that more after fair season's over and show season's over, so we'll, Mr. Walden, Mr. Talbot will get that, get those numbers to me. And they should, as, as early as the Howe County Fair is now, it, it, they're usually wrapped up with, with their projects by the, by the middle of July now, so. So we'll have, we'll probably, by first of August, we'll know what those numbers are.
One other thing I'll just point out real quick is in your agenda, you'll notice you have C-SIP goals and you have board policies for every agenda item, every action item.
Good.
You also have a new freshly laminated placemat there that you can look at to see which, which goals we're on and why we're talking about each issue. So they all connect with C-SIP, they all connect with board policy, and I want to make sure that we're governing at the appropriate level.
I really like the policy there, that's a very helpful, I appreciate you. I'm sure you guys had a hand in it.
They did.
Thank you.
As well.
Thank you, appreciate you.
All right, I think we're ready for Andrew, maybe?
Yes. Do you have a Mournet presentation?
Yes.
I already connected for some reason. So what I am here asking for tonight is I am suggesting that we approve the National Data Student Privacy Agreement, the Missouri version of that, and I'll explain what that is in a second. And I'm asking that we put Marty as able to approve those. Okay, so while he's pulling that up, in one of our board policies, the letter is EHC, EHBC Administrative Policy Two, should be attached on there. It lays out how we should approve which sites our teachers and students can use that deal with student data. Student data is pretty boring, but it's a pretty important thing as well, you know? We won't, we don't like all of our data's being available to anybody. I mean, data breaches are real, they can cause real harm. And also, we should just be protective with what we're given because the student data is the parents to control, but as a school, we're able to act as a parent and protect that as well. So in terms of websites that we can use, a lot of the free stuff that's out there isn't really that friendly with how they treat the data, you know? Because they make money off of the data, and so they don't really like to follow really sound student or privacy practices. And so you have to enter into agreements with those people if you want to do anything that is like safe for that. So the national, what is it called? There's a National Data Privacy Agreement of an organization that put something together, and then Missouri made a version of that in conjunction with Mournet. They have a whole presentation on it, but I would just want to show you a few points of it.
It's not pulling up as a presentation, Andrew.
Oh, it's a PDF, yeah, I'm more than.
You just have to scroll through it.
Oh, that's fine. There's only a few slides I want to actually show you.
Okay, yeah.
Is this scrolling?
Is it?
No.
No.
Here.
It's gonna be the fun, awkward game.
Fun, awkward.
A little, little farther down, a little farther over, you can do it, yeah.
Let's just not do that.
We'll reprogram the computer.
Just a moment.
Oh.
Let's just do that.
You click just on the presentation.
Okay. Well, look at you.
All right, cool. So the one slide I wanted to point to, would you put this in the middle? This is the slide that kind of talks about all the laws and rules that dictate how we handle student privacy. SIPA, that's your firewall, so that means like we can't have anything inappropriate for students. This talks about we can't survey them on sensitive topics. This one is the one that's really big on student privacy. This is the one that says parents can tell their, tell companies that children under thirteen, their data has to be expunged, request. HIPAA, that's your medical stuff. FERPA, that's actually dealing with the data that we collect. That's more of infinite campus data, like the actual student records. And then there's states and other ones, those are policies and stuff states put out. So with all that in mind, it's a really big headache to deal with these policies. So we currently, if you did look at that policy, there's a list of ten items that we have to go through whenever we're approving a website. And currently, that involves like reading the Terms of Service, reading the privacy policy, trying to figure out what's there, what's not there. Very rarely does any website actually meet all of those requirements, and so normally I have to put a policy, or. I have to put a policy or put a list together. I would send them to Hall or Marty and say, hey, these don't agree with what we have, these are what we'd have to look over if we were to use this service. And we did this several years ago when this policy first came out, I did a lot, and we've kept up after that, but it got to be really big and I just stopped approving websites. You know, we kind of stick with the same group, we stick with the big ones, like, these are pretty big names, we're gonna trust them, you know? One of the big ones they have is like, data centers are located in US. That's really hard to find, may be true, but it's hard to find in their Terms of Service because they're not gonna go out of their way to be like, oh, yeah, we're gonna offer you tons of protection for your student data. And so, what this agreement would do for us is it would allow us to actually approve things and keep it inside of a very clean box that says, you know, okay, this does meet all the requirements and it is safe for your students to use. Whenever you have like a national version of this, or even a state version, it's a lot easier to use because other schools have already done a lot of the work. You know, so if another school has already gotten this company to agree to this terms, then we can just piggyback off of their policies or their agreement most of the times. And so, to also help with this, there's an organization called MOSPA. That is the Missouri version of this national organization, and they're the ones that put this thing together, and they help organize this process for us. You know, so they have a website, we can go on there and say, hey, we want to use this contract, we want to use this service, can you go ahead and make sure we're good? And then we agree to it, and then we can use it after that. There are a lot of websites that don't qualify for that, though. So, there's another legal organization through Mournet or that has partnered with Mournet. It is called the Education Co-op TEC, and what they will do is they are a legal organization, but they will take our Missouri National Data Agreement, and they'll go to the company for us and be like, hey, this school would like to use your service, this is the agreement they need to do, and they will kind of work through the process of getting us, like, to where either the website will agree and say, hey, we'll do this agreement with you, or not. And so, that service through Mournet is $530 annually. I think that'd be a very good spend for that kind of service. All in all, this just would really speedline and also clean up our data privacy or our data policies and put it into someone that actually knows a lot more about what they're doing in terms of the legal side of it, and also keep it a lot cleaner because TEC has done a lot of agreements as well, and we can piggyback on their agreements too. So, I would really think that this would be a good thing to do. And then, it also ties in a lot with the AI stuff. So, I remember, I think it was a year ago, maybe, we approved the AI policy. One of those, like, the stipulations for that is that we have contracts with the companies on how the data's gonna be handled, let alone the policy that we're gonna, or the use case plan, usage plan, I forget the wording, but the plan we're gonna make for how we're gonna handle AI inside of schools. So, this would help with that part as well, is making sure we have a legal agreement on how data is handled before we start opening it up to people and say, hey, use this really cool feature or whatever. So, that's a very broad way of how it works. Anybody have any more specific questions?
So, is this a change in our policy?
So, the policy's all there, so we're not changing policy, it's more of a change in how we exercise the policy or how we take care of it.
Yeah.
So, right now, Marty has approved the, like, okay, we're gonna use these services, you know, but we're still agreeing to the Terms of Service that they put out there. What we're wanting to do now is we're wanting to actually enter into a contract with these companies and saying, hey, we want to use your service and these are the terms that we want to do so under. And so, if you approve the contract, the Missouri version of the national halls or the national agreement, then any organization that is willing to use that agreement flat out, we can just approve, like, you know, with, under the same umbrella, under the same agreement. Now, if anybody wants to allow us to use the contract but with an exception, like, hey, we will do this, but instead of two weeks to delete the student data, we need two months to delete the student data, you know? Then in that case, that has an exception, a red line amendment to it, and then Marty would be able to approve that without having to bring each contract to the board.
And that's the standard student data privacy agreement?
Yes, it should be attached to the board policy.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that's the agreement we would use, but there is a spot in there for, like, you know, if there is an exception, the company says, we are willing to do this for you, but with this one or two exceptions. And what I'm asking is that Marty can approve those, being the custodian of record and stuff that he is already, to like, just say, okay, we're gonna agree with that and we'll go ahead and approve that. Otherwise, it would probably have to come back to the board each and every time.
Right, that's where, I'm just wondering if it's gonna be in conflict, in conflict with our policy that we already have in place that requires the board to vote on all contracts?
Yeah, that's, nothing against Marty.
No, but there is a stipulation for, like, so that you wouldn't be, I mean, that's gonna be overwhelming.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
But if we approve this, are we conflicting that other deal? Well, how does this read? Have we read that?
Well, there's the stipulation in there that allows for this.
Right.
If you give us, or if you give me, like, you can approve them.
So, I'm just trying to get down to the heart of the question here is, is we want you to approve the contracts, but just in this realm, basically.
Right.
So, it'll be-
For student privacy.
It'll be this, it'll be this contract, but with a section, so if you could look at the agreement-
Where exactly am I pulling that up?
It'll be in the attachment under my section, it'll be the one labeled MO NDPAD1. Okay. So, under that, if you go near the end, let me see if I can pull up a copy of this one, let me find the page. Okay, it is page 21.
The very last page.
Very last page. So, through the whole agreement, there's like, you know, it lays out all these things that say, you know, hey, we're gonna, the school's gonna own the data, the provider's gonna be a, what's the FERPA term? Provide, no. They're gonna be a data manager under the FERPA rules, and with that, then, like, it has all that laid out, but then on this section, if there was something that had to be changed, like I said, a minor detail about it, then that would be what Marty would have to approve is the minor detail of this contract.
Right.
So, by you guys approving the contract tonight, we're able to use that, but if something had to be changed in this contract, then Marty can prove that as well. Otherwise, we would bring that modified contract to you guys and you could say, yes, this is something we're gonna do.
I just wanna, you know, we're, I wanna make sure that we're not being asked to approve a policy that undermines the authority of our policy.
Sure. I don't think we are.
You don't believe that we are?
No.
Well, we're gonna approve this, okay, see if I understand, we're gonna approve this contract, and in doing so, we're approving Marty to, to make agreements with any small modifications.
Right, using this contract.
Using this contract. Small modifications-
We would just be-
With technology providers, yeah, not-
We would just be giving Marty the authority to do those contracts under this provision in this focus.
In this realm, yeah.
But it would be separate contracts, I don't think. It would just be small modifications to this contract.
Like you're talking about-
Yeah, he's not gonna buy a house with this contract or anything, but like, you know,
it will be a separate contract for entering into with each provider. So, like, there's fill in the blanks in this contract, you know? It's like, we want to enter into a contact with the Infinite Campus, you know, and like, you know, we're gonna put Infinite Campus here, and Willows Springs will be here, and then we want to enter into a contract with Clever. So, Clever would go in this spot where Infinite Campus name was before, and we're gonna do the same contract over and over and over again with all these providers.
It's just gonna be redundant.
Yeah, right. And we're agreeing to these, we're agreeing to the Terms of Service right now anyway. Like, I mean, because we're, like, using these services, we've already entered into agreements with these services because our students are using them, and Marty has approved them, this is just a more laid out, structured version of it.
It's actually bringing more into policy.
It's bringing more into policy, it's more strict on how we're doing it. Because if a provider refuses to enter into an agreement like this, then we shouldn't be using their service because this is what is required of us by all that list of people that we have before, or all those laws we had before.
So, what's the $500 doing for us now that you're-
So, what that'll do for us is, like, say we wanted to go in, what's a free website? OpenAI. Say we wanted to get a agreement with this with OpenAI, you know? So, for that, I would have to contact OpenAI myself and be like, hey, I'm Willows Springs School, I want to enter this agreement with you. This organization, TEC, if they have already worked with OpenAI, they can just say, oh, yeah, we've already done that with them, here's the contract you can use, and you're good to go. If not, they will go to them on our behalf and say, okay, we're wanting to set this up, the school wants to do this for you. They're not gonna go into any agreements, they're just getting it all ready for us so that we can go ahead and approve it. And so, they do the legwork of getting all-
Lot of headaches, I think.
Right, oh, yeah. A lot of legal contacting that, like, is very tedious to do.
Similar to MSBA taking care of our policies?
Similar, yeah, but on a very specific, like, this is just student data, they don't extend out beyond that at all. And they don't actually make any recommendations, they're just taking our policy and pushing it up here for them to approve, or for them to agree to agree with us.
So, essentially, it can save us money because you could be utilized doing other things during that time.
Right, so what we're doing right now is we're just not approving sites, you know? So, it's like, it's a tedious process, and I'm just like, these are the stuff we've approved, for better or for worse, and now, there's no time to approve new things right now.
This will open it up for our teachers and our students to do some of the things that they may want to do with some websites that we just have, don't have under our umbrella yet, because we haven't been able to-
To spend the time sitting down and talking to people.
Build a queue or to control the teacher getting into something.
Well, sure, yeah, yeah, of course.
It's a company you came with.
Oh, yeah, it has to go through a whole process. Like, we have to approve websites, like, we have a lot of things locked down at the firewall level, at the Google level. I mean, not saying that people can't get to them, but there's a lot of physical controls, and then there's logical controls. You can't just go to a website and say, here's my roster from Infinite Campus, please do something with it, you know? Like, we, it's not like that.
So, I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand this. So, when we vote on this right here, what exactly are we voting on? We are voting that we can enter a contract with that company that you referenced, right?
Though, we aren't entering in a contract with the company, the company's just gonna be a service we're gonna purchase.
It's a subscription.
It's a subscription, yeah, we buy that through Mournet. No, we're asking you to allow us to use this contract as a template to go into agreement with lots of people that we use, that use our student data.
Okay. And it's $553 annually, is that what you said?
That's what the company is, yeah, that's how much the company paid for.
To help us.
To help us do that.
Right, that's the plan that you're approving. To maintain our student data.
Okay, so we're approving-
The contract.
This contract to-
With this company?
Yes.
Is this contract with Mournet?
MOCA?
No, this contract is gonna be with lots of people. This will be with any provider we have.
But you're improving the template.
The template, right.
Right, and the procedure that this is, this is what we're gonna do. So, on your agenda, it's a plan, because that's the plan moving forward to do it this way.
So, we would be approving the standard, the standard student data privacy agreement?
Right, it's actually the Missouri version, it's the MO NDPAD.
We'd be approving you guys to use that, to give clearance to use the websites.
Correct.
And then we'd also be approving you to make the contractual adjustments with those websites.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get.
Do we have that?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot, this one took me a little while.
We've been trying to do this for a couple of years, it's a very, it's a wide thing to understand, there's a lot of intricacies to it.
Do we have that in our-
For people that can't sit through a password. It's the student data.
I don't see it on items for actually.
Really?
I don't think so.
It should have been there.
There's the communications.
Yep.
That's different.
It is. I apologize, that should be on there.
I need something written up.
It's on, I cut off my copy. But I basically said to approve the card. I printed that off.
Okay.
I'll find it.
Any other questions for Andrew or Isaac? Okay, until I can't do something on my phone, good luck. Thank you, Andrew. All right, district scorecard.
Oh, Robert's gonna join me with on this.
Yeah, all right. Hopefully, hopefully in your packet, you have this, the district scorecard. Just, do you have my presentation, Marty?
Yes.
Okay. This is, this is data based off of items that are in our CSIP plan. As a matter of fact, if you go through the, if you look at the, the data itself, the first column talks about the goal that is represented, that this, that the data represents in our CSIP plan, and then the measure, and then each individual measure that goes along with it. So, we have those, we have those numbered on our scorecard, 1 through 25. I'm not gonna go over all 25 measures tonight because many of them, we went over in February, and then, and they did not change. One thing that I will point out, the first nine items, I'm sorry, eight items on the scorecard represent MAP scores. Since we have not received our scores yet for the 2025 testing season, we will not, I won't be going over those, I'll be going over those later this fall when Desi lifts the embargo on those, yes.
Okay, Chris, I just want to make sure if I understand the goal, 1.1 there, okay, you'll find that on your scorecard or your thing here, is your goal 1 and then number 1.
So, those are all instructional goals?
Yeah, those are all instructional goals.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so that's what he's referring to.
Yes, usually when I come to you and I refer back to a CSIP goal, most of, most of my items fall under goal 1. If not, it may fall under goal 2 and under instructional staff whenever I talk about professional development or something along those lines, so. So, so anyway, like I said, the first nine items on the, or eight items on the scorecard, we do not have data on yet, and like I said, I'll share those with you whenever we receive that and it becomes public. The, looking at measures 9 and 10 on the scorecard, ACT score, composite score, the 2025 data is, our average composite score is 19.9, and that is out of our 2025 graduating cohort. We won't, we won't see the results of that on our, on our APR until the, until the 2026 APR comes out, one year, a little over a year from now. So, so that, that's a little bit lagging data, this is, so, we won't see the fruits of this for another year. But that is a very good ACT score, as you, as you can see on your, on your scorecard going back to 2021, we have, we have not been this high, and I think it was 2014, I believe, the last time we were even in the 19s. And this is, and that was before we, we tested all of our juniors on the ACT. So, that, I thought that was a, I thought that is a great achievement. The 2026, looking at, looking at this year's, this year's, this last year's juniors who are going to be seniors next year, that number is, their numbers are a little bit lower. We're banking on some, some students taking the paid ACT as they go along to try to boost their score and hoping that that composite, that average composite score goes up a little bit for them.
Isn't that the average of all of our kids that took it?
All of the seniors, so this is the class of 2025, and that's their, and that's their graduating, or that's their average score, out of all their best scores.
All the ones that took it?
Yes, all the ones that took it.
As juniors?
Either, either as juniors or seniors, so it's either the one that we, we gave them their junior year, or if they took the national test at some testing.
A two-point jump basically is really a big jump.
Yes, yes.
That's crazy.
Yeah, and, you know, and, you know, it varies between cohorts. I mean, you're gonna have some, some kids that just knock it out of the park, and then you're gonna have some years that's not gonna, it doesn't look near as, near as good, so. But don't, but next year, I would be, don't be surprised if this is back in the 18s. This is a very exceptional score, and for a, you know, we're one of the few schools that still allow all of our, that offers the ACT to all of our students, and so, for that to, for us to have a 19, something in the, a score in the 19s is amazing, so. If we relied just on the paid ACT for kids going offsite to take it in another place like Kabul or West Plains, it would be, it would be a higher score every year, but we do, we do, we do provide it as a service because, you know, some, some students may But uh, we do, we do, we do provide it as a service because uh, uh, you know, some some students uh uh may not be able to, may not take the time to go take the A C T. And then all of a sudden they need to get into college and they don't have a score, so. Um, the second one down, uh, we have se- we have several students that do not take uh the eight, the regular A C T. Instead, they take the A C T work keys as juniors. And our and our group that tested this year, uh, this this would be this year's juniors, this number ten, the number ten that's represented up here. Uh, we gave, we gave the A C T work keys, which is a measure of career readiness rather than college readiness. And uh, and then uh, the the students who uh earned a qualifying score earned a cer- earned a certificate that can be attached to a resume. Or uh, or a job application or something. Uh, there's several businesses in Howe County, mostly in West Plains, that recognize A C T work keys as a uh, as a workplace readiness uh assessment. And uh, we had two, we had ten students who uh earned a certificate this year out of the twelve that tested. And so we have never had uh, we've never had numbers this high. I think the most we'd ever had was prior to twenty twenty one, I think we had six. So uh, so that this was, this was, this was amazing to have uh ten, ten students uh score that high. Um, I'm going to skip around a little bit, I'll come back to I ready a little bit later. Uh, but uh, looking at thirteen through eighteen, uh, our final attendance percentage uh for uh, for uh, our final attendance percentage for the year was uh ninety three point three two. That means that was uh, we had ninety, in other words, we had ninety three percent of our uh students here. Uh, that was, you know, their hours attended divided by the hours that were possible for them to attend. Uh, if you look at uh, number fourteen is in yellow right now, it it is incomplete because I have not submitted state uh, uh, our our state data yet. And uh, and it's the four year graduation rate, this would be our class of twenty twenty five graduates. And uh, and I have not, uh, since I haven't uh submitted that, we we won't receive that data for a while, actually. Uh, our I that's due to the state on June thirtieth. And I think if I looked right a while ago, uh, those scores will not be available, or I'm sorry, that's that number will not be available to us mid-July, I believe. I'll I'll double check that, but uh, that was uh, so that'll be a little ways down the road. I'll I can share that with you either in August or um, or uh, when we go over the scorecard again, which is next February, really. Um, this year on the access test, uh, we had four students that attained English proficiency. That means that they're going to grad, those four students are going to graduate out of the program. We had three in the elementary, one in the uh high sch- or I'm sorry, in the middle school. Uh, they will, they're uh, they'll go into monitored status. That means that they won't uh be pulled out uh for for additional English language services. So uh, so that's a, that's a great testament to our uh E L L teachers, um, Sergey, Ms. Kate and Ms. Rickard. And uh, so they they did a, they did a great job, but number went down from eight to four. But if you notice as well, our number of students that are receiving services uh went down from fifty two to thirty eight. We had eight, uh, eight, eight of those fifty two graduated out of the program last year. We also had, uh, I believe, six, uh, whatever the difference is between uh, between our fifty two and thirty eight minus this other eight. The rest of those students moved out of the district, so to uh, to other schools. So that that's the reason for the drop in uh students uh receiving enrollment. Part of them graduated the program, the rest of them moved. Uh, dropouts, I I this is a mistake. After I, after I submitted this, uh, I I discovered actually this morning that uh, that we had two students that we coded as dropouts this year in the high school. Um, and uh, for two very different reasons that I can't really go into an open session. But uh, but that's uh, that that number of that's, one was a, one was a senior and one was a junior uh that uh, that we had to code as a dropout. Uh, when we go over enrollment data in a little while, I'll go over a couple other scenarios of uh students we had coded as dropouts in the other buildings. But uh, that should be, that should be two instead of zero. Uh, district mobility rates, uh, that is the, basically the percentage of students who transferred in and or out of the district this year. Uh, over the course of the year, they either trans- uh, either uh entered school here or exited or both. Uh, and so that, so yeah, basically the percentage of students who moved in or out of the district, that was a twenty four percent. Uh, that is the lowest that we've had in the last five years. Uh, you know, right after we came out of COVID, that number jumped up, it spiked and then it jumped up again this uh in twenty three, twenty four. Uh, we did have a lot of movement this year, but uh, we also had several students who came into the district thi- this year. So the so, you know, while while it's, while we're our number or enrollment numbers are declining, uh, the movement itself is slowing down a little, slowed down a little bit this year. Okay, um, any questions about any of the indicators I've talked about on this screen? Okay, all right. Uh, the last thing on the, before going to I ready data is uh free and reduced lunch. Uh, this uh, back in February, uh, our number, our percentage was sixty two point nine percent. Uh, that jumped up a little bit. We had a little bit of a surge in uh, right at the end of the school year of uh students who qualified uh for free and reduced lunch through uh different state programs such as uh food stamps, for example. And so uh, that was uh back at some, uh, back in April. So uh, we we went up a little bit and you could see we were up o- over four percent from where we were at the end of the year last year. So, um, it it's and it's the same thing. Uh, we have a higher percentage of students on free and reduced lunch in elementary, a little bit less in in middle school and then a lot less in high school. And uh, a lot of that is uh, we don't have as many students uh qualifying through direct certification or through our state programs like foster care. Um, uh, food stamps, for example, uh, and a lot less applications come in. And I talked with Regina about that and uh, she said that that I asked her if that was the case, she said that was a true statement, so. Um, so that's where we're at right now on um free and reduced lunch. Uh, I ready data, uh, I I provided you a little bit more detail uh than what I'm going to show you up on the screen uh in your packets. So you can see a little bit more uh where students uh lie in individual grade levels. Uh, I'm not going to share those with you because uh, out in the open because uh, I don't want to personally identify teachers or target any teachers in in the in the uh data. But uh, if if you get way into the weeds of our C S I P data, uh, goal one, uh, you have in your packet, it's it, it's really two parts. Uh, in the yellows is that we're going to develop enhance quality educational instructional program and performance and to improve performance. Okay, that's our curriculum development. The green is to help enable students meet personal, academic and career goals. Okay, that's that's a big thing is that we want, we want kids to 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 set goals for themselves. We uh, for we want uh, for for them, for, you know, just their own intrinsic value. Uh, we want uh, we want them uh to have, uh, we want us, we want to set academic goals as a district. We want uh, but the students, that's also part of per student personal goals. Uh, teachers to set goals for their classrooms, uh, and then to help students set their career goals. You know, what what do they, what do they need to do to be prepared for uh life outside of high school or life outside of college even? So we can help them set the set goals for five years from now or five years after they graduate. But uh, get down to the uh action step two is various forms of assessment of data to evaluate plan, evaluate and plan instructional programs. This is what I ready helps us to do. It's one of many assessment pieces that we use. Uh, anything from classroom data to the MAP test, to the A C T, I ready is one of those pieces of data, okay? Um, so I I did this back in February, but I updated it to be a little bit more relevant and to show you our purpose in using I ready. Uh, I use, I'm being a former track coach, I love using track as an example, but I changed events this year. I think last time I used like longer triple jump. This time I use the shot put and there we go. Here's Mr. Jackson Cantwell. If you guys have haven't watched the sports lately, the last couple of weeks, uh, Jackson signed with the University of Miami to play uh football. But uh, but he uh, a couple of weeks ago, the state track meet, he uh, he he broke the, he broke his own state record in the shot put. And so he set that, uh, he set the mark of throwing the shot put seventy six feet, eleven and a quarter inches, seventy seven feet even was the national record. So he's three quarters of an inch away from breaking the national record. He's an anomaly, he's once in a generation type of athlete, okay? And uh, our our class three state champion in comparison, uh, uh, the the class that Willow Springs is in in track and field threw fifty seven feet, ninety three quarters inches. So that's a, you know, quite a, quite a bit less. Uh, to medal at state in class three this year, he had to throw forty nine, six. The average first place in the meets that Willow Springs went to was about forty five feet. And the average eighth place, which is the last place you can get in score points, threw about thirty seven feet. So when planning for uh, for a track meet, uh, our coaches, typically coaches try to plan to uh, to for the for kids to throw in this area, okay? To try to, to try to uh, plan for kids that are able to throw, to be able to throw in this, in this uh desired result zone, I guess you could call it, okay? But let's say that we have an athlete that throws twenty seven feet, that's nowhere close to thirty seven feet. And uh, so, you know, we may try to, we may just try to set goals to help them improve. Number one, uh, so we may, just throwing numbers more than anything, we may set their first goal to uh, to uh, you know, break thirty feet. Okay, if they reach that, we may set another goal, thirty three feet, okay? So I say that to say this, okay? Whenever we look at I ready data, we look at individual student growth, okay? And I'm talking about what te- what 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 our teachers look at, what our adminis- what our building administration looks at. This is a third grade stu- no, a fourth grade student uh who took the, who took I ready three times this year. Grade level is way up here, okay? This student started uh, started about a whole grade below uh, below grade level. But if as they, but as uh, they kept taking the test, this student scored higher, never got to grade level, but but kept going, but kept getting higher. Going back to my uh graphic here about track, uh, this student, all right, this is kind of what this, where this student is. He's like the twenty seven foot shot putter, okay? Had may got to here, could get to here next, whoops. Okay, but uh, but and he met, he met that first goal, the typical growth line here. That's, that's a goal to get to after the first, after the first test. Somewhere be, somewhere before the end of the year, we want, we want our, we would like for all of our students to get to here. Uh, but if they don't, we just want to see them, we just want to see them improve, okay?
Chris, I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
And and maybe I'm jumping ahead, but where's five eighty at on your chart? On your, that that grade level, where does it, can you take us back to the track chart and tell us, tell us where grade level is on the track chart?
Right here, this green.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, I I made it same color to kind of, yeah, I thank you for pointing that out, yeah. We kind of think, we're kind of thinking this would be.
That's great.
Yeah, that that, yeah, it'd be grade level in this instance, thank you for asking that. Um, so, so anyway, this uh, this student, even though, even though they never got up to grade level. Uh, or grade level is actually about five fifty seven, this five eighty is about mid, what mid fourth grade would be, okay? So they, they, they not, they didn't get up to grade level, but notice they got to their second goal line, this which which we call the stretch growth line, uh, or stretch line in uh, uh, in track, it didn't sound very good. But uh, the, but uh, but anyway, this is another one that did start out below grade level. This is a third grader in reading, started out in grade le- at grade level or below grade level, almost got there the second time and then got there the third time, okay? Notice that this this student met their typical growth line, what it, what the average student should score based off of what they scored the first time. Um, but they uh, they didn't reach their stretch growth. So depending on where you start at, the the typical growth line is set by I ready and the stretch growth line is set by I ready, it's not set by us. So it's based off of their, all their data over the years that they're saying this kid by the end of the year should be at five twenty, okay? And they wound up at five thirty one, so they they exceeded expectations there, okay? Um, so that's what we look at the most. Your data on, your data on the ballot scorecard is based off of the typical growth line. What is the percentage of the students who made, who uh, who who made typical growth? So in reading this year in grades K through eight, fifty six percent of our students uh that tested reached their typical growth line. They reached, they reached this line, this solid line right here, okay? And that number varies by student according to where they scored the first time, okay? Um, the higher you score, really, if if you're like way up, a higher, a higher tiered student, you're above grade level. It's hard to get to a, to your typical growth line, it's hard to get way beyond your typical growth.
So if they tested their grade level to start, it's hard to show any improvement on this, right?
Right, right, if, or I'm talking mid or above grade level. Now, if they're low grade level, it's easier to to show improvement. Now, uh, to toward their typical growth line. Now, I could, I could change this and say, and say, you know, we have the the percentage of the students who improved from their first test to their third test. This would be a much higher number, almost one hundred percent, okay? But uh, I like using this to to gauge according to I ready's day, past data, where where a student typically would grow, okay? Um, so in elementary, this is grades K through four. Um, and if you look at, if you look at kindergarten data for, on on the end of it, on the kindergarten data, you'll notice that no students are scoring in the red. That is because they have, uh, they can't, uh, that's typ- that represents three or more grade levels below. There, there's only, uh, I'm sorry, two or more grade levels below. Uh, you, you can't go back to grade levels in I ready uh from kindergarten. You could go back from kindergarten to preschool level data, uh, reading, uh, so you'll have some students scoring level, uh, yellow, which is one grade level below. That's because there's pre-K standards that they can, that they, that we can test on, okay? Um, and then, so starting in first grade, we might see some red students in the red. The students in the green are either are at uh, are at or above grade level, okay? And uh, and it even breaks it down that if they're in the stripes up here, they're at mid or above grade level. So you, the the top, uh, the top line up here in elementary represents the fall test window. The middle one represents the uh winter test window. The uh bottom one represents what we did at the end of school, okay, at the end of the school year. So you could see that the, that the number, the amount of green has grown with each time that we took the test, okay? As a matter of fact, we only had six percent of our students who were two or, two or more grade levels below, okay? Now, guys, I want to caution you on this, on the, especially on the reading side of things. If they're not reading at grade level, that does not mean they can't read, okay? So uh, so we, we're not saying here that thirty four, fifty four, sixty one percent of our students uh, uh, can read and thirty nine percent of our, thirty nine percent of our students can't read. That's, that's not what we're saying, okay? They're just not at grade level, okay? And that's another, uh, you mentioned on the M S B A report, that's going to be something that uh we receive down the road is a, on the MAP test, is a grade level uh, uh statistic. And so that may be, that's going to be something else we'll probably be reporting on uh, on the, on their, on our district report card. Or on our ballot scorecard down the road. Math, you see more of the same, uh, improvement between first and second and second to third uh test windows, okay? And then a, and then very little, very few in the red. And we saw yellow shrink as well, okay? We go into middle school. Um, one thing I want to caution you on middle school is students take, we see very similar results that in, and on the first window that that we see in uh elementary. Not as much green, quite a few. Not as much green, quite a few, quite a few in the red. We'll see some improvement from the first and second. And then a lot of times, we level off or sometimes even go down from the second and third windows. I, I asked the middle school, didn't get a, didn't get a, a response. I, my question was, is there anything that you can tell me about, about the third window, other than is it just middle schoolers being middle schoolers? And I didn't get a, I didn't get a response on that. So, so I'm going to say, it may just be middle schoolers being middle schoolers, okay? And if those of you who have had middle schoolers in your house, you probably can understand where I'm coming from. Math, I, you can, you could see, see that we, slight growth between the second and third windows. And, and, and then the reds, the students that are two or more grade levels below have, have, have shrunk. They either are in the yellow or may have graduated into the green. Okay, are there any questions about I-Ready data?
Well, one thing I wanted to point out to you when you were giving us all the shot put distances and stuff, that you did that in feet and inches. You get the state, that's it that way when you go to the track meets, everybody knows what the heck they're talking about.
Okay, I, I've, I've had conversations in officiating meets this year, I'm working for one of the timing companies, that, that they do have the option, whenever they get the results up there, to read it in feet and inches. There's a lot of schools that don't read it in feet and inches. They did at state, though. Well, more times than not, let me just put it that way. The last piece of information I don't have up here in, on the screen. I gave you some enrollment numbers, and it was just a breakdown of students, students that by month, that either withdrew from the district or entered the district. And I'm not, I'm not going to go over that in detail, but I, I just wanted to, I wanted to give you some idea of where our students were going, okay? Did they, if they transferred to a different district in the state, and that does include virtual students. We had ten students, eight in high school and two in middle school, that we, that, that were indicated, that the buildings indicated that they transferred to a mocap district. In other words, they transferred to Launch, Missouri Virtual Academy, or Missouri Connections Academy. Those were the only three, those were the only three virtual providers, mocap providers that our students went to. So, and none in elementary. Now, I will tell you, we already have received word that we are going to have at least two in elementary, and I haven't seen the other, the other buildings yet for twenty-five, twenty, they're going to start twenty-five, twenty-six with a, with a virtual provider. So I, that, so that, just give you an idea there. One thing I wanted to mention to you as well is the number of, the number of dropouts. I told you there were two in high school. There were also two more that we coded in the other, one, in the other buildings. Those were students that, that left us over the summer and gave no forwarding address to us. So, so that we didn't get a request for records, we couldn't make contact, we tried emergency contacts, we exhausted all of our possibilities, and we finally just had a codemage dropouts, so. They, hopefully they pop up somewhere else, and there is, and that happens from time to time. They, they, they just disappear for a year, and then all of a sudden, all of a sudden I get an error on our, on our, in state reporting, saying that we need to recode them because they've re-entered school. So, there, we, so they, so that happens probably about once a year. Do you all have any other questions for me on enrollment or anything I've talked to you about today? The next thing I'm going to probably talk to you, giving to you as far as data is concerned, will be our MAP and EOC scores when they become available. I, I don't know what month that will be. Hopefully, there, there were, you know, state law, I think, has forced Desi's hand on trying to get the APR out sooner. So I'm hoping that because of that, we'll get the, we'll get the, we'll get MAP scores to you a lot earlier. Next time I'm going to give you ballot scorecard, will be either January or February board meeting. There, there's a couple factors in there. Number one, will I get the data done for, over Christmas break quicker? And number two, will be, do we have girls' basketball game that I have to work clock for that night? So that's, those are the two factors I would say good consideration.
We'll get you out of that.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you will. So, and then once again, in June next year, so. All right, thank you all, appreciate.
Any questions?
Anything, any questions that you might have? Thank you.
Thank you. While we transition, the item for action, improved data and security plan. And I had that in my PowerPoint, but it was not in your agenda, so my apologies.
Is it?
It's on there now.
It's like letter D.
All right, I guess we're ready for our athletics director.
Okay, you know, we just wrapped up our spring sports season the last couple weeks, so we're kind of transitioning into summer. Been really busy. The spring is especially busy. Just a lot, a lot of things went on in the spring. It is, it's quite the operation, not to mention the weather that we have to deal with, it kind of drives us all crazy. But before I get too much into that, just behind the scenes, you know, we are, we run a big operation, and I'll talk a little bit about all of that in a minute. But there's a lot of people that make our events possible. Coach Wagner being one of them, you know, our clock workers and our, our teachers, our principals, our building secretaries, bookkeepers, clock workers, transportation department, Logan and drivers. Just, everybody's flexible, they're, they're really great to work with. And there's just a lot of communication goes behind the scenes to get our kids and get our events to take place. And, you know, I can't thank them enough, and just wanted to tell you all that, that there's just a lot of people that make us, make our athletic department work, and we sure do appreciate them. Just a little reminder about our, our athletes. Our athletic teams have more students participate through the year than any other extracurricular activity. In fall, we had a hundred and seventy-three athletes, and I'm talking about Millstone High School. Winter, we had a hundred and seven athletes, and in the spring, we had a hundred and ninety-eight athletes participate. So, I mean, we've got kids doing a lot of things from beginning of the year to the end of the year, and then throughout the summer as well. Talk about that, too. You know, our athletes and their families make tough choices that require a lot of sacrifice. On any given day of the school year, we'll have coaches and athletes on campus before anyone else, and they're the last people to leave. And they may not realize it at the time, but in my opinion, and I'm sure you all can agree with me, that's the kind of stuff that I believe is going to set our kids up, a good foundation for success in their lives. So Dr. Spence kind of asked me to go over a few things that's kind of happening in athletic department currently. Some things you all are probably aware of, and some things maybe you're not. So I'll just start, talk about some of the standards that our athletes are held to at Willow Springs. Willow Springs student athletes are held to a very high standard than most, more than most, and are required to meet requirements not mandated by the state. When I say the state, I mean Misha, our, you know, high school athletic association, that we have to, have to go by and follow, follow guidelines. We have grade checks every five weeks at, at the high school. Our grading policy dates back well before I had this position. And our grading policy, student athletes must maintain a two-point-two-five current GPA in order to participate in contests. A lot of people may not know that. That's pretty, that's a pretty high bar. If they fall below this GPA at a grade check, okay, what we do is, is I meet with them, talk to the parents, we send letter home, and we put them on academic probation. And then if that happens, we're going to run grade checks, okay, in the next five weeks. And if their grades don't come up at the next grade check, then they go on what we call academic ineligible. So at that point, the student athlete would be ineligible until the next grade check. At the next grade check, their grades have to be above a two-point-two-five GPA. Again, these, these, these requirements are not mandated by the state. This is what we do at Willow Springs High School. And by the way, during the probation, and if, and if a kid were to go ineligible, you know, we do have some things that the coaches are tracking, and that we require them to go to tutoring. And, you know, obviously, we don't want kids missing practice and things like that. But if you're ineligible, you probably need to go to tutoring. But having said that, our teachers are really good to go meet our athletes before school, whether they're academically ineligible, or in trouble, or just an everyday student that needs a little help. Our teachers meet them before school a lot, so a lot of times, you don't have to worry about that. So what the state requires us to do is we, we have to check credits earned by our athletes twice a year, okay? That's what Misha requires, and we do that at the end of the semester, at the end of each semester. Which we do that as well, in addition to our GPA requirements. In our block schedule format, our students have to pass seven of eight courses. So to put that in perspective, if we follow the state guidelines, which many of the schools do around us and farther, a student could have all Ds and one F and be eligible to participate. At Willow, a student can have all Cs and be ineligible. So to be an athlete at Willow Springs, you must take care of business in the classroom at a much higher standard than is required. And I just think, you know, that's just something we've done, and we continue to do it. But it needs to be, I think, you know, everybody needs to know that our athletes are doing some, a higher standard than a lot of athletes have to. And in addition to the grades, we conduct random drug tests once a month on our athletes. If you're a student athlete, your name goes into a pool. Again, this is high school. We do not do this at the middle school level. They go into a pool, and then we select a, usually about ten. Okay, once a month, we select students for a random drug test. If a student athlete tests positive, they are suspended for twenty-eight days of competition for a positive drug test. Second offense would be a ninety-day suspension. A third offense would result in suspension of participation in all athletics, the remainder of his or her enrollment at Willow Springs. Again, not required by the state. Don't have to do that, state doesn't make us do that, okay? We do not do grade checks or drug testing that would involve a suspension or ineligibility on any other group or club in the district. We hold our athletes to these higher standards because we believe athletics is a privilege and must be earned. Again, this goes way back. This is nothing new. So coaches, you know, not only do they push our kids to be the best in practice and competition, they also understand these expectations, and they encourage their students to be, or their athletes to be better students. And they often check in with their teachers. Competitive sports, often a top motivator for many of our kids to be successful in school. So it kind of goes hand in hand with these, you know, academic requirements. Athletics motivates kids to, to work harder in the classroom. In addition, competitive sports are often a top motivator for students to stay in school, instead of choosing other opportunities nowadays that they have available to them to complete their schooling. So that kind of bounces us into a hot topic right now in Missouri. Sure, a lot of us have heard about it, is the Senate Bill sixty-three. And talk a little bit about that is, Missouri Senate Bill sixty-three primarily focuses on expanding opportunities for students in non-traditional educational settings to participate in public, public school events and activities. It modifies definitions of these schools, sets requirements for record-keeping, and ensures these students are not excluded from public school events based solely on their educational setting. So a little, little more detail about that. Basically, it allows students in alternative educational settings to participate in athletics, fine arts, and extracurricular activities. And I'm reading this directly from the bill. While expanded participation still requires meeting specific conditions, like passing tryouts, meeting residency requirements, and adhering to the same standards that, you know, we all know that's kind of impossible, how do you hold the same standards as our seated students? We don't have guidance on that yet. Senate Bill sixty-three, where it defines home schools and FPEs, family-paced education schools, clarifying their characteristics and establishing requirements for maintaining their educational records, including a portfolio of their academic work and a minimum number of instructional hours. So reading all that, I just decided I would call the head of mission and ask, what does that mean for me? Because it, okay? So this is a recent statement from the Misha Executive Director, Dr. Jennifer Ruckstead, she's the boss. And her statement was, "At this time, the bill has passed both the House and Senate and awaits Governor's signature. Assuming he does, MSBA is working right now on sample board policy to get district, to get to us. Misha is working on bylaws for member schools to consider in order to allow for schools to be compliant. There will be a special pilot session in August to consider these changes." So in short, she says, "Students who live within your school's boundaries, who are homeschooled or full-time virtual, will have access to your Misha sports and activities, as well as any other student clubs and activities." Most common non-Misha clubs she's talking about would be FFA, FBLA, Deco, Beta Club, et cetera. You know, I can only speak for athletic department, but I'm definitely waiting more direction from Misha on how we can, you know, track academic progress, and just kind of see exactly how that's going to work and what would be required. You know, for the other student clubs and activities, I'm not sure if it's something for the people in charge of those to consider, because it is coming. For athletics, I think it will have a ton of kids trying to do this. Probably not. But I do, but we will have some, so something we're going to have to prepare for. My opinion is, then, all right, we're going, we need to make it a positive for these students and our athletic program. So if we're going to be required to do it, then we need to, we need to make it a positive for, for us and for the kids that are going to have access to us. And I think we can do that.
Does that take place immediately? Or is that, or is there a year, a phase?
You know, that's a good question, because she told me it would go, going to effect August twenty-eighth. And I'm like, well, I mean, we can talk more about it, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying, if that's the case, then, you know, and probably need to prepare for next year. Yeah, we need to be ready this year. So I can stop with the rest of it, if you have any more questions about that. I don't know a lot yet. Like I said, we're all, we get updates, we get, you know, we get memos each week from Dr. Ruckstead, and, you know, she just kind of says, stay tuned, and we're working on how it looks for us. But, you know, they still got, there's still boundary issues and things like, like that. But how are we going to track academic progress and hold them to the same standards? I don't know, but we can do it.
On, is there a timeframe, like say if a kid decides to go virtual before they can play that sport? Like if a kid's, if, if they go under athletic review or whatever you just mentioned there, can they just say, like, I'm going to go virtual, but I still want to play, you know? Is there anything in the bill that-
Not that I've seen yet. That's probably what they're going to work on. I, I think it's a-
You think you'll get guidance on that?
I would hope, because, I mean, I could see that happening. You know, I don't know. I, you guys know me, I'm, I'm kind of old-school in the way I think, and, you know, you know, we got athletes that, they're off doing their thing, and they're competing, and they're practicing, and they're getting home at ten-thirty, eleven, they're going home. They maybe have homework that night, and then they're back on the holiday. If I can go virtual, maybe I'll just-
Sleep in.
Yeah, sleep in, maybe get a little extra weightlifting, lift a few shots up, you know, come in and practice. I mean, you know, so, you know, those are the things we've got to work through, but we, we have, we will have some guidelines. And, you know, we are going to give them access to athletics as well as the other clubs.
Do you think you'll probably be pretty good handled by August when school starts?
I think so, yeah. I mean, the way she's talking, I mean, the governor passed the House and the Senate, he's going to sign it. So they're working on it. We'll have more, and I, like I said, I'm going to have to meet with Dr. Spence and Mr. Schmidt and, and Dr. Johnson when it all comes, comes about, to figure it out. But, you know, I don't know, we're, you know, on the athletic side, they're not going to say, hey, you have to let the, the student on your team. I mean, they're going to say, they're going to say something like, you have to give them access to a tryout. You know, that, that kind of stuff, so I, you know, I don't know. I don't have a lot for you on that, but it is, it's a hot topic right now, so. Anything else on that?
So, I mean, one of our teams will go to try out situations?
Well, I mean, we could. I mean, we kind of do anyway, but, you know, we don't, I mean, we don't necessarily cut kids, you know, especially at the lower levels, but by the time they get to high school, they generally figured it out or not. You know, we just don't, haven't really had a need to do that here, numbers-wise. Some of your bigger schools might, you know, if you have- Some of your bigger schools might, you know, if you have a crazy amount of kids start showing up that are homeschooled, then maybe we need to do that.
Your bigger schools have tryouts anyway, don't they?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, most of your schools do it anyway, so that, that's the, that's the thing that they're going to say, you know, they're not going to tell somebody that you have to allow them access to, you know, an athletic team, but you do have to have them access to a tryout. But again, I don't think we're going to be flooded with, with a whole bunch of this, this scenario, I just don't see that happening, but we will have a few, I bet. We will know more, I guess, as we get into it. You got, you're thinking something?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to talk a little bit about the athletic department budget, we made some changes this year, and last year, not too long after about this time, Jamie and I sat down, we looked, looked back at our year and kind of our expenses, and most importantly, our official pay and the fees and mileage expenses that you all, student counts had to annually write off, negative balances, you know, we would start with zero dollars, so it's hard to, hard not to write something off when you start with zero dollars, so this year is kind of a baseline year. Talked to Jamie about kind of moving forward, well, you know, we look back a little bit, we plan and we put, we budgeted, but again, we'll look back at this year and you'll have a good idea of what we need to budget for next year. So this year, we've come in under budget and officials pay. Basically, we had less home games this year than we did in twenty-three, twenty-four, but we budgeted enough to cover our, our referees and our officials, which is a huge expense, prices continue to go up on them, fees, and mileage that they get, so we do have a separate account for them now, so you all, you all were writing that off, that was a big part of what you all would write off each year, so now, no need for that. Again, next year, looking at next year, I do have a, quite a few more home games scheduled, like a lot more basketball home games scheduled, and, and it's just kind of how it works, sometimes you're on the road more, and, and next year looks like a heavy home year, so fees will go up, but I think we're in good shape with what we have set aside for that. Our student athletic accounts are all zero or in the positive, so we have nothing, nothing to write off there, so that's, that's working out well, that's good. I know last year, we talked to you all, you know, kind of not fond of having to write off the negative balances, and we wanted to get away from that, you know, in reality, it's the same thing, but, you know, just getting the money in the proper accounts makes us all feel a little better when the fees start rolling in. So I think this year went well, and like I said, this is the first year doing it this way, so it's kind of just a baseline year moving forward, but, you know, I just wanted to tell you guys that, you know, I think it's going well, Jamie thinks it's going well, so she kind of, she kind of guides me there with some of that stuff, and, and moving forward, I think it's going to be a, a good thing, we don't have to write that off every year, because it is, and the fees are going up, you guys know that, but we got a pretty good idea from year to year what the officials' fees are going to be, and, and our fees for tournaments and things like that. Facilities update, continue to make improvements in our athletic facilities, I think you all have seen most of them, but I want to talk a little bit about them and brag on the people who made them happen. I mean, last year, middle school softball field has, is being utilized full-time. If you come driving down Ferguson, it's a really, it just, I mean, I've been here twenty years, and it, it just looks awesome down there, it looks real, we're making a good use of that space, so I'm proud of that. Occasionally, our middle school girls play at Booster Field if we have a need for sharing umpire or if we need lights, we don't have lights down there, but it's an awesome field, a lot of people put some, a lot of work into that. It's been a huge help in giving them their own facility, middle school boys able to practice there as well. The next phase at that facility is working on leveling out left field, left field is, is pretty bad, it's, it's kind of dangerous, but I talked to some of the guys, and I think we can, we can help that and get that improved for next year, is, is what we're hoping, but it's got a little slope over there in left field if you're running, or running into fence, so we'll get that leveled off. In the last year, we've also installed new netting, both middle school field and high school field, and that netting catches the foul ball, it's a safety hazard, and it's a lot safer situation when we're hosting numerous games down at Booster, and also we're protecting our good neighbor over there at the middle school field, trying to keep it from going up in his yard, and I think he appreciates that as well. Also got a new scoreboard down at the middle school field, it's, it's top-notch, Nezco, I deal with them, and, and it's a really nice scoreboard, put that up last year, but I don't know if you guys have seen that. So anyway, those additions make our ballparks much safer for players and spectators. Couple of things that's happened this year is, middle school field dugouts have, we've kind of finished them off, Brad Silas and his students built those dugouts, and inside our home team's dugout, Cubbies, for our players now have their own space built by Shane Bell and his students. Shane Bell also built benches for fans to sit on down at that middle school field, so, and that's along the first baseline, and he did a great job. Just having all these guys on campus that can do this stuff is awesome, big help for us. Mumford Gym, we got a new wall and stage paddy, and that was, that was, that was really needed, it was becoming a safety hazard with the lack of padding on the stage side, and they look really good. Ethan and Landon were able to put those up. You guys have probably all seen those, but they look, they look awesome. Okay, we remodeled the girls locker room in Mumford this year, which has been a, years we've been kind of, yeah, we need to get this done, and then something comes up, something comes up, and if you know Carl, Carl Lewis is fantastic, but he's kind of, you just never know what's going on, then all of a sudden I get a call, and he's like, hey, Carl's down here, yeah, I didn't, I mean, I knew, we talked about it, but he just got it done, and, and they are awesome, our girls, you, you know, their locker room was very inferior to, to what other schools have for their, their girls' gym and, and to what the boys have on the other side, and it's just something that needed to be done, and it was done top of the line. He built lockers with lock boxes big enough to fit shoes in them or whatever, and they lock, he built an oversized bench that the teams can use during halftime, they can all gather on, in this really nice space now. The only thing I, I want to do is I want to put a, a new whiteboard up for them, but right now, the lockers are, are great. The wall space in that locker room is not very good, there's just really no, it's just, it's all chopped up. Carl was able to figure out a way to get eighteen lockers along the wall, and they, they just look awesome. He's very skilled, and, and you couldn't, we couldn't have bought him any nicer, he built them right here on, on campus, and, anyway, girls will enjoy that for years to come, so, you know, I know they're, they're really proud about it, I've asked the coaches, you know, what do the girls think, and they, they're pumped, they're like, they're excited for next year. Coach Collins is talking about getting nameplates for them and really making it a special place for those girls, so that's a good, a good thing. The time, this time of year, the Bear Training Facility, last year we were talking about it, you know, it's our first full year, first full summer, and, you know, this time of the year, it's the busiest place on campus, there's no doubt, every morning it is packed with kids, and the buzz from the coaches is kids are getting stronger, attendance is up, coaches are pushing the kids daily, and it's uncomfortable and hard, I see them coming out of there, they're sore, they're tired, and they're drenched in sweat, and, you know, the culture of accountability and hard work ethic is as good as it's been in a long time, I've been here twenty years, and I, I'm seeing a lot of good things. Athletes are learning to take responsibility for their results, kids who want to get better and stronger are buying in and showing up, it is hard, the coaches say that, that they're busting them hard, they said, they said they're sore, and, you know, they're apologizing to the other coaches because they may not be able to run, but that's a good thing, you know, they're, they're getting after it. Talked to Coach Schwalm a little bit, and I just asked him what were numbers were looking like in middle school boys, middle school girls, and high school boys and high school girls. Totally said they've been getting anywhere from a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and twenty-five kids starting at seven AM and finishing at ten, and that's three different sessions, they're able to run that many kids through on Monday through Thursdays right now. Now, middle school and high school teams, they've also begun their summer contact days, and they've already been heading out to camps, shootouts, I mean, we're, we're not too far out of school and finishing up spring, but they're already full, full bore into their summer activities. If you didn't know, we're allowed twenty sports contact days in the summer, each coach is allowed twenty days with their athletes, that excludes conditioning and weights, so sports-specific, each, each coach can, can have their kids twenty days. Just a good reminder that coaches and athletes don't get summers off, they're up here, they're working, and they're trying to get better, they're learning, they're learning good habits. In addition, each head coach usually tries to do some fun activities to get kids more invested in each other, I've talked to a couple of coaches this morning about, there's some community service things they're wanting to do with their teams, that's a big deal, teaching kids to get out and do some things in the community, we've got some teams that are fixing to do that in the month of June. Okay, just some recent changes worth noting, we may have mentioned it in here before, I think maybe I did, last time I was in here with you, but most of our high school athletes now have the opportunity to be in strength and conditioning classes daily. I believe this coming year will be the third year of this. Coaches stress the importance of seeing their athletes every day, and we were able to accommodate this and allow them that opportunity. It, it, sometimes we can't, every now and then we'll have an athlete that has a, a class that interferes, and they just can't get there every day, but that's, that's something that is helping right now, and it's helping, I'm seeing a change in, in our kids, how they look, and, and how strong they are in their athletic abilities, so that is a, that's a big thing in, in the athletic department. This is another one we're really excited about, next year in the middle school, Dr. Johnson and Mrs. Henry have helped us get back to offering athletic blocks for our seventh and eighth graders each day, and it flip-flops, I think, green and white, I can't remember exactly the block of the day, but it's a similar setup to what we used to have in the middle school a few years ago, it's not exactly the same, but it's similar. So when possible, we will now be able to use class time as practice time for athletic teams when they have their athletic PE blocks. We will have some things to work through, Dr. Johnson and I, we, we're going to have to meet and, and talk a little bit about this, we've kind of, you know, we've talked a little bit as the school year ended, but there's some more things to talk about, but the benefits of this is, you know, what I'm hoping and what I anticipate is partition, uh, participation numbers should go up. For the first time in, in really my twenty-year career, I'm seeing schools struggle to put together a full seventh and eighth grade, two, two teams, two full games. We often get requests for only one middle school contest, regardless of sport, we've even had to request this ourselves, and that used to never happen, ever, so I think it's crucial to do all we can to get more kids at the middle school level in athletics, and I anticipate this helping. If you can get them to a practice during school hours, I think your numbers are going to go up and it's going to get them hooked, and, you know, that's, that's what we're excited about. It also frees up a facility, and, you know, when we're, when we're doing our indoor sports and outdoor sports, we, we struggle with getting everybody a facility to practice in, so if we can get, knock a couple of practices out during school, hopefully that's going to reduce the need to practice, you know, fighting for facilities after school and also reduce the need to practice before school so much. Things for us to work through is, is that not all middle school coaches teach PE anymore, so in the past, we had this type of schedule, our middle school PE teachers coached all the middle school sports, so it's pretty easy, but also, back then, we didn't have middle school softball or middle school baseball either. But I'm confident we can make it work the best we can, we can get kids involved by having athletic blocks, when we're able to get the coaches with them. So right now, they have had athletic blocks, but what they've been doing with our athletes is they've been working out, training, lifting weights, that sort of thing, that will go on still, but if we can get the coach with in that block, then they're going to be able to take advantage of having a practice during school hours, and we'll just have to keep an eye on it, and hopefully that will recruit more kids to get involved and get them hooked. Yeah, looking ahead to next fall, you know, coaches, they're, they're all ready, they're knee-deep in summer stuff, and, you know, I'm going to work scheduling things for next school year, but one exciting event worth noting is next school year will be our hundredth season for Bear Football, in fact, our first season was nineteen twenty-five, twenty-six, and week three, September twelfth, we planned, it's up, we plan to designate this home game as Hundred Years of Bear Football Celebration. So we're planning a big event, this evening, we'll begin with a catered meal for all former, for all former Bear Football players and coaches at five PM, still working on the details, I've had a lot of people offer to help, so we should be able to make it a special evening, we've ordered t-shirts for the occasion, the plan is to honor former players and coaches at halftime of the game, you know, we're going to be prepared for a big crowd, we want to pack the, pack the football field that night, and just, I know we're all looking for it, me personally, I'm looking for it to see a bunch of old faces and Bear Football family from the past, so that's going to be a really exciting night. Last thing before I wrap it up, important athletic dates, just for the summer, we've got, dead weeks come up, and that's, that's, that's when, you know, we're not allowed any contact with our athletes, coaches and kids, we'll have a break June twenty-ninth through July sixth, and August third through August tenth. July eighth, we have a free physical clinic at Mumford, get a little closer to that, we'll start trying to advertise a little more and get them there, it's so much easier when our athletes come to that free clinic, and we'll get that knocked out, and they can start practice on time and not have any issues there. August fourth, new gym and old gym floors will be refinished during dead week, schedule that so nobody's, nobody's on it, it'll be fresh and ready to go on August eleventh, which is the first allowable practice day for high school, August eighteenth is the first allowable practice day for middle school. So that's all I have for you tonight, if you guys have any questions?
I've got one.
Let's hear it.
We just moved your budget, we kind of, everything kind of changed, or you guys did, you know, changed it up, I think we, last year, we went away from the, what was, the student count center door, so can you explain to, kind of roughly, like what your budget is, like?
Yes.
And, and how, how did it go? I mean, this is your first year, you're throwing a baseline out.
Yeah, so I, I think it went really well, we, there's a lot of different categories, like the whole operation, and there's a lot of different things that we do. So like, for instance, we got the general high school athletic account, okay, that's, that's going to be, there was seventy thousand dollars in that, and then we, we budgeted twenty-four thousand dollars for high school refs, and there's still remaining six, sixty-six hundred.
In addition to?
Twenty-four thousand, yes, and there's still sixty-six hundred thirty-one dollars that we didn't spend on, on officials, so came in under budget there, and, and next year, I think that's, I think that's a good number to stick with, twenty-four thousand for the officials. We do have fees and mileage, you know, that's, that's another account that we have, and then we have supplies, so those are kind of the, that's kind of the entire operation.
So moving the budget like this hasn't hindered you in, in your operate, everything?
No, I mean, we're, we're still operating basically the same, we just, we just put it in there upfront.
Budget in advance.
Yes.
Right, right, yeah.
You, I got a little messed up on this part, when we were talking, you made a comment or said, class time for PE time, taking kids out of class, or however you said it, I took it as, taking kids out of their class time to do sports, you probably didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, we, we're not allowed to do that, no, you're talking about middle school, when I was talking about the middle school, so when middle school kids have their PE, that, that is athletic, that's what I'm calling their athletic block, so, you know, if you're not an athlete, you go to PE, if you are an athlete, you go to athletics, and you lift weights, you train, you go to practice, if the coach can look there.
All right, back to Mr. Wagner, is that right?
No, no. You want to, Mr. Wagner?
No.
I'm going to do read.
You're doing the readings, okay, I thought you-
As much fun as Mr. Wagner has had tonight, I think we'll, we'll let him sit this one out. So actually, Crystal Hopper was our, was our of, of reading success plan, this was something that the state- This was something that the state developed for us and put into play a few years ago, and we've kind of had to learn it on the fly, what that means for our students. And ultimately, it's a good thing, but it does require some extra effort. So, Mrs. Hopper has been doing that for the last couple of years. She's moving to Mountain View, and we will be finding someone else to take over the reading success plans. But in the interim, I'll go over what Mrs. Hopper has given me and give you just kind of a basic idea of what, what we're doing with, with reading success plans. So, this piece of legislation came down and said, hey, if kids are behind in reading and they're X amount of, you know, we looked at I-Ready scores, like, if they're, if they're falling behind that much, you need to put a plan in place to make sure that they can get where they need to be. So, that's where, kind of, the, the idea for this. So, it's a, it's a good idea. We use I-Ready to determine eligibility for student success plans. That's SSP. That's another acronym for you. It's one of the few assessment pieces that have been approved by DESI in order to identify students. So, we give I-Ready. We talked about that tonight three times a year as part of the SSP process in addition to dyslexia screens. Dyslexia falls under this category as well, and progress monitoring for intervention. So, I-Ready gets used for a lot more than just the quarterly report. Each student that qualifies for an SSP should receive tier-two or tier-three intervention based on the need. So, if they qualify, we're gonna give them some extra intervention to try to get them back where they need to be, back on grade level. Regardless, all students that have been given an SSP should be a part of an RTI, Response to Intervention. Another great acronym for you. Once students begin closing in on proficiency, they should be moved out of RTI but still monitored. So, our goal is to get them back where they need to be, but do it a little more focused. So, Centerville six-eighty-one is where this came from, requires that an SSP remain in place until the student demonstrates grade-level reading competency. So, again, looking back at those I-Ready reports, we need to see those students in green. And if they're not, we have to have a plan in place to get them to the green, not just saying, well, you know, we're just gonna teach harder and, and do better. So, demonstrating proficiency on grade level in all appropriate foundational skill areas is indicated on I-Ready for two consecutive reading assessments, and maintaining grade-level proficiency in reading through tier-one instruction alone. So, maintaining where they're at with just the tier-one instruction, which is just regular classroom instruction. If a student has been removed from their SSP and future data identifies a significant reading deficiency, they must be given a new SSP. So, we're continuing to monitor students and making sure we've got a plan for their success. So, the Willow Process. Data for each student is stored in a Google file. They can easily access and share digitally as students move from grade to grade. Classroom teachers and interventionists have access to that document and put in data as needed, scores, goals, interventions, parent communications. So, the first year the plans were implemented, teachers had the option to exempt students from receiving a success plan if they felt the test score was not an accurate representation of their ability, as long as they could supply a body of evidence to show an accurate representation of their ability. So, basically, the teacher could say, well, that score is much lower than I thought it should be, and here's, here's the data that I can show that says that, yes, this student is actually reading on grade level. The second year, that option was removed, and all students who met the criteria had to be placed on an SSP. That option was removed by the state. This caused a large increase in numbers of students who were placed on an SSP. DESI did come in after their first assessment and make an adjustment to criteria for second and third grades regarding phonemic awareness and phonics, and that reduced the number by a few, but still a large amount more than the previous year because we didn't have that ability for a teacher to come in and say that the I-Ready score is not the only thing that you need to be taking into consideration. I can show you where they actually are reading on grade level. So, DESI took that away, which obviously made the numbers rise. So, this is kind of the requirements by grade level, an essential reading skill. So, you, you know, phonemic awareness, phonics, all of those things that, that make good readers, and then RSP, determination requirements on the far right. And you have this, and you can look at it as well. Here's the numbers. This is kind of the, where it all really lands for us this year. Kindergarten, zero started, six students with reading plans at the end of the year. And obviously, you know, the higher you get, Chris outlined it with what he did, the higher you get, the more opportunity you have to fall behind. If you're supposed to be reading on a sixth-grade level and you're reading on a third. So, that's gonna increase the, the higher you get. First grade, twenty-five started, fifteen ended. Forty-three to thirty-seven, forty-six, I mean, we dropped in every area except fifth grade, where we had fifteen at the start and fifteen at the finish, same in sixth grade. So, again, the middle school had problems getting those kids off of those plans. And, you know, Chris, you mentioned it really well earlier, but it's, it really emphasizes what we see in I-Ready and what we see in this is the importance of that early childhood education and getting that foundation because it gets increasingly harder as the student gets older. And, and your, your brain is just, it's not quite as moldable as it is when, when you're young. So, ten met the exit criteria and, and went off of the success plan. And then, those that are still on will be on there, ready to resume that next year.
So, if I'm a little bit right, say the third graders, there was forty-six that started, thirty-seven finished, right?
Right.
But that was all due to the fact that eight withdrew and one, one made the exit criteria, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, actually, that number, only one kid.
Right, the ten exit criteria, that's the, well, that was the, you know, the final kids.
What's that?
So, at the bottom, the total, the ten exits.
That's total, he's talking about third grade.
Yeah, just in third grade, there was just one that, that met.
I was just using mathematics there.
Yeah.
So, when you see the numbers go from forty-six to thirty-seven, that doesn't mean anything, really. Just until you look up there at the end and it says one made the exit.
Correct, yeah, the highlighted, that's the number that you wanna look at on the far right.
And I do want to emphasize too, on the, the eight that withdrew, their student success plan follows them. If they transferred to another public school in Missouri, we transfer that student success plan to that district as well. So, it follows them wherever they go.
And it's, yeah, you know, we're kind of conditioned to think, oh, that's bad, we've got all these kids. But really, that's a good thing, that they've got a success plan and that we've, we've targeted them to help them additionally to what we're already doing. So, of course, we want the number to be as low as it can be, but a high number just means we're, we're targeting the kids that need help.
So, the withdrew doesn't mean they, they don't wanna do the program?
No, that, that's not an option. We're mandated to, to make sure that they have a plan. There's a lot that goes into this. Mrs. Hopper did a really nice job with it, and we'll be finding somebody to, to carry that torch this year and, and move forward with it. But something that DESI continues to, to work with guidance for as well as everybody kind of figures out how to best implement these plans.
I think reading is a, is a national problem.
It is, yeah.
I think everybody's aware, the, the national data shows that even adults are not reading near as much as what they used to, and it goes all the way down.
Yeah.
Yep, it goes right back to the focus of that. And this is gonna be something that we're gonna deal with from here on out.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a ton of research out there. I know that they've, that our teachers are aware of and are using, hopefully, to address these reading deficiencies, but it's gonna be an ongoing battle.
Sure, it is, and, you know, we're always, and even it goes back to like what Andrew was talking about with the, the, like, we want teachers to be able to use everything in their arsenal to, to try to, to try to help with this, so. Well, maybe this might be a good thing to put on the scorecard as well, that we could kind of keep tabs on, on how those success plans are going. Any other questions on, on that data?
It might be good next year to have whoever is working with this to come in and talk about.
For sure.
Strategies they're using, and things they're seeing work and things they're seeing not work, and what, as a school, we might do differently.
Definitely, yeah. All right. Communications plan. I'm asking the board to, to re-up our contract with Amplified Communications. Remember, we entered into agreement with them last year to handle our public relations. So, they need crisis and emergency communication, which is something you guys probably don't see a whole lot of, but it makes, gives me a nice security blanket, somebody that I can call very quickly. They've already got everything ready and basically available twenty-four seven to, to help us with those emergency communications when they need to go out. Website maintenance and updates, social media management, news releases, branding, strategic messaging. I think it's money very well spent. Of course, we used to have a, a person doing this for us full-time, but I think Amplified has done a really nice job kind of filling in that gap for us, and I'd like to propose we stay with them for another year.
That is a twenty-five-hundred dollar increase, is that right?
It is, yes.
From last year's service?
Yeah, last year was kind of a, that was their first year, and so, they felt like it was worthy to, to get it up a little bit in price, and honestly, I feel like that's fair. You agree? I agree. I would like to have kept it at ten thousand, but I think twelve fifty is fair.
All right, go on to Board Policy KL. You guys have that in your, on your iPad there. I thought this would be a good one to, to look at. It's probably one that is applicable more often than anything else. It has to do with how we deal with complaints, and, and gives you some guidance there. And we've talked about that at our special board training somewhat, and I thought it'd be good to just remind ourselves again. It's, it's a pretty simple one, but it's also pretty easy to ignore or to, to, you know, for example, if somebody comes and to you with a problem, it's easy to say, okay, I'll take care of that for you, instead of referring them to the personnel or the people that they need to, need to go to. And this gives you a pretty good process on which to follow resolving a concern or complaint. If it has to do with teacher, you would suggest they go to that teacher first. And then, if it's not settled there, then ride on up the line to the building administrator, and then to the superintendent, and then it could come to the board by getting put on to the board agenda. But that's how it reaches us, is by going through those other steps first. And it's just good to remind ourselves of this, I think.
The chain of command.
Chain of command, exactly. Because most can be handled at the initial source, and usually, things are because of misunderstandings or not understanding the complaint story or, or so on. But every complaint deserves to be heard.
It's challenging too, as a board member, to not say the wrong thing.
It is, yeah.
I mean, you almost have to have a speech prepared, you know, when that's, when you're approached by that, so you're kind of consistent with, you know, like, I can, I can handle it on the single board, you know? You gotta kind of go through this field there.
And you could have just put on a little recording, which you could put on your board.
Just, just flash it around like a man.
I like how the writer makes that.
That's good, yep. Any other comments on this?
So, I have a question. If we have somebody that comes to us with a complaint, and they have went through the chain of command, they don't feel like they're getting any resolution, is that, is it at that point that we say, hey, see if you can be put on the board or on the agenda? But what if they're worried about retaliation?
That, I mean, that's a tough one.
It's a hard situation, you know?
It is, but it's also, it's also a big pop-out too.
Yeah.
Sure, we're worried about retaliation, and I don't wanna have to go through the hard steps, 'cause it is a hard step, so you have to stay in front of the board.
Right.
With policy, we're, we can't retaliate, like, there's, there's legal ramifications for that. So, you know, I feel like there has to be a little bit of a trust there, but there's also some things in place where, you know, administration can't retaliate without, without legal action.
And that's where we as an organization need to develop that trust.
Yeah.
To avoid that, yeah. Because I don't think anybody here is gonna stand for, for anybody being retaliated against.
Not what we're about at all.
Good comment. Anything else? Well, then, where are we at?
We're almost done. We've got the FY twenty-six budget. I'm just gonna ask you to, we spent an hour on that before the six o'clock meeting, but I would just ask the board to approve the preliminary budget tonight with the knowledge that I'll be coming back in the next couple of months with, with updates, and then let's do that budget. And that's all I have.
Any discussion there?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this.
Sure.
We reviewed last year's budget, right?
Correct.
And then, so the, the changes that you made, the handwritten notes in there, that's the adjustments that you're gonna make to last year's budget.
Right.
So, what we're approving are those notations in this budget?
Correct. The idea for next, and most of that will carry over, and knowing that we can't really do anything until the end of the fiscal year, and that's why we'll need amendments in July and August. But this, this allows me to go ahead and get it ready to go, where it's not just the rough copy anymore.
But what we're approving are the notations that you made in this.
Correct, yeah.
That, this is essentially our budget.
Yes.
We're preliminarily, preliminarily?
Preliminarily.
Yeah.
Approving, yes, yes.
We're just gonna have to finalize.
Correct.
And you will usually go through rounds.
Yeah, yeah, it's the first round.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right, comments from guests? Then we'll move right on into items of traction here. A motion being ordered to approve the FY twenty-six budget, which is our twenty-four, twenty-five budget with the amendments made.
Summon.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion being ordered to approve the communications plan as presented. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And a motion, is there any other discussion on the trailers?
So, we're gonna put them up for bidding?
So.
With no time on it.
Well, there would be, I'll put it on.
They're gonna need to come back to us.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll get them at the office, and then I'll share those with you.
Yeah, you'll come with a recommendation to hit something.
That's how.
Before anything's done, we have to approve.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is just an approval to open up the bidding process.
Okay, so a motion being ordered to open up the bidding on the two trailers between the elementary buildings.
Summon.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And then now, a motion would be in order to approve the Dashon Data Security Plan as presented.
Summon.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, now, we receive a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel.
Summon.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.